Good evening. Welcome to our October 21st School Board Regular Meeting. The time is now 6:00 PM. The School Board would like to take this moment to respectfully acknowledge we are residing on the traditional land of the Denai people. Our mission as a community, we create supportive learning environments where all students thrive. Ms. Richardson, would you please call the roll?
Colonel Campbell?
Present.
Colonel Foster?
Here.
Ms. Dulean?
Here.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Here, sorry.
Mr. Doran?
Here.
Ms. Maple?
Here.
Mr. Burgess?
Here.
And Mrs. Burnett?
Here.
Thank you, the Board has a quorum.
Thank you. Up next on our agenda, we will have a music performance by members of the West Valley High School Choir. They are under the guidance of Gwendolyn Brazier Choir Director.
Next we will be performing "Day of Fire and Sun" by Sarah Teasdale.
For the day of fire and sun.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, West Valley High School Choir, that was amazing. Up next, we have our school member recognition of Melissa Burnett. Hey, that's me. I guess I'm turning it over to you guys. You want me to come?
Good evening, everyone. Tonight, I have the privilege of recognizing Melissa Burnett, someone whose service has made a lasting impact on our district. Over the past three years on the School Board, and especially in this last year as Board President, Melissa has led with professionalism, thoughtfulness, and grace. This past year has brought some of the hardest decisions our district has ever had to face. There were moments of challenge, uncertainty, and deep heartache. Through it all, Melissa approached every issue with calm leadership and an unwavering commitment to doing what's best for our students, our district, and our community. She listened deeply, spoke with integrity, and reminded us that leadership isn't about winning every debate, it's about making space for every voice. On a personal note, serving alongside Melissa has been a real education in what it means for this office to be nonpartisan. We come from very different political backgrounds, and yet, time and again, we find ourselves standing together, working toward the same goal. It's been a powerful reminder that when we focus on our shared values and our shared love for this community, that labels fade away and what's left is opportunity for collaboration, respect, and friendship. Melissa, your ability to bring people together even when opinions were divided has set a standard for all of us. You've shown that disagreement and kindness can coexist, that strong leadership doesn't mean loud leadership, and that grace under pressure is a strength worth aspiring to. Thank you for inviting me to lunch when I decided to run for office. Thank you for inviting me to serve alongside with you this past year as your Vice President. Our agenda-setting meetings with Dr. Minert truly have been a highlight of each week this past year, filled with as much important hard work as they were with laughter. Thank you for making space for all of us to speak up about the things that are most important to us, even when you knew it would mean you would receive endless texts, emails, and phone calls riddled with name-calling and accusations of wrongdoing. And most of all, thank you for your dedication, your patience, and your countless hours of service. You've left a mark on not just this Board and this district, but everyone who's had the privilege to serve with you. Please join me in thanking Melissa Burnett for her compassionate leadership and her three years of service to our district.
Thank you. Oh goodness. Thank you, Mr. Doran, I wasn't ignoring your email. I do have some words that I would like to share, but I would like to share them during my President's Report, so I would just like to say thank you, Ms. Maple, thank you Administration, thank you Board, thank you Public, thank you. There are so many flowers up here, I don't know what to do with myself. Oh, thank you, everybody, okay. Move back into the agenda for a few minutes. Next is our adoption of the agenda. Consent agenda items marked with an asterisk are considered routine items, not requiring public discussion by the School Board. Unless removed from the consent agenda, asterisk items will be automatically approved when the agenda is adopted. Questions concerning these items should be directed to the Administration before the meeting. If the Superintendent or a member of the Public wishes to have an item removed from the consent agenda, the request must be made to a Board Member any time prior to the start of the meeting. The Board Member has the discretion to accept or deny the request. Only a Board Member may remove an item from the consent agenda. If an item is removed from the consent agenda, it shall be considered separately as the last item of new business. Asterisk items will then be adopted by one single motion. May I get a motion?
To adopt the agenda with consent items.
Second.
Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess? Ms. Dulean?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Up next is public comments on reports and non-agenda items. Public comments on reports and non-agenda... Sorry, I lost my spot. Okay, there we go. Public comments on non-agenda topics, this is an opportunity for community members to be heard. The Board will note the topics, though no official actions will be taken. Topics may be referred to the Administration for further research and future potential action. Board Members will not respond to comments or questions made by the Public. Concerned citizens should first discuss matters with the Superintendent or designee. After the Superintendent or designee has heard the concerns, they may be brought to the Board. Individual students and district personnel may not be discussed in public testimony. Please contact the District Office to route concerns about individual students or district personnel through the appropriate channels. Members of the Public will be given the opportunity to speak on agenda items at the time the item is introduced for action and/or discussion. Once the agenda is published, testifiers should email or call the School Board Office by 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting to sign up for public testimony. Students who have signed up in advance or are in the room and wishing to testify will be called upon first, followed by members of the Public who have signed up in advance in order in which they have signed up. If time remains, anyone else in person will be invited to testify until the one-hour time limit has been reached. A sign-up sheet is available in the Board Room before the start of the meeting for those who have not already signed up in advance. Speakers are limited to three minutes each and should provide their first name, spelling their last, and state their area of residence. Are there any students who wish to testify at this time? Seeing none, we will move to our sign-up list, to which we have one sign-up, and that is Mr. Aaron Crook. Good evening, Mr. Crook, if you could state your name, spell your last, you'll have three minutes. The green... There you go, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Aaron Crook, last name C.R., O.K. And I live in Fairbanks, uh, good evening. Madam President, from the very first day you sat behind that dais, you brought something that Fairbanks desperately needed, hope. You stepped into your position at a time when meetings were tense, when the community was divided, and when many of us had started to lose faith in the people guiding our school district. But you never lost faith, not in us, not in the district, and not in what could be built through patience, compassion, and listening. You led with grace when others led with frustration. You listened when others were too angry to hear. You remind us all about that leadership isn't about control, it's about care. Time after time, when the conversations got hard, you were the calm in the storm. You didn't add to the noise, you steadied it. You reminded this entire community that respect and kindness still belongs in public service. Melissa, your time as President has been a gift to the District. When meetings were difficult, you were the voice of reason. When tensions ran high, you were the steady hand keeping things grounded. You've kept the focus where it should have been, on the students, the teachers, and the future of the school district. There are people who serve for the title, and there are people who serve because their hearts give them no other choice. You are that kind of servant leader, the kind who gives their time, their energy, and their heart, because they simply care too much not to. And that is something this community will never forget. As you step away from the dais for the final time tonight, I hope you know that you know what you've built here. You've left behind a stronger, kinder, and more united district, one that remembers how to listen, how to work together, and how to lead with heart. Melissa, thank you. Thank you for your patience, your strength, and your grace. Thank you for showing us that leadership can be compassionate, and that respect still has a place in public life. Fairbanks is a better place because of you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crook. We did have one sign-up here, uh, last minute in the Board Room. I will ask for Ms. Gail McBride to come forward. Good evening, Ms. McBride, if you could state your name, spelling your last, you'll have three minutes.
Gail McBride, M.C.B.R.I.D.E. And, um, I just would like to thank you for the time, or I know, well, I don't know, the hours that have been invested. And I appreciate that. I appreciate the things that you have worked on, um, that I believe in, and that have been helpful. And, um, change is always hard, but, you know, it's good, often. When a door closes, another opens. Whatever this all means, none of us know, we'll deal with that, but what I do have confidence in is that you care about children. And so, I will be looking forward to, um, what path that takes, and what you do in the future, and, um, and work toward things that will better all things for the, for the children in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride, appreciate your words. That comes to the end of our, uh, pre-signed up sign-ups. Is there anybody else, Ms. Eisman, please come forward? Good evening, Ms. Eisman, if you could state your name, spell your last, you have three minutes.
Nikki Eisman, E.I.S.E.M.A.N., West Fairbanks. Um, I just wanted to take a minute to address, um, Sunday's editorial in the New York Times, in the News-Miner, which I think a lot of us saw. Enrollment in Fairbanks North Sabre School, is down, now what? And, um, just to say that I'm really disappointed in the editorial board. I know that these pieces are, um, always collectively written, uh, but the tone of this showed, um, it didn't show what I've come to expect in the editorials, and, um, I, I think... It showed me that the people, that the group of people that wrote it, in fact, don't know what's going on in our district, they don't know what the district goals are, that they hadn't taken the time to see the work that was all, that was already being done in all the areas that they say work must be done. And I, um, I look forward to, um... Some forthcoming response from the editorial board that in fact reflects the reality of all the hard work that the Board is doing, and in fact, all the inward-looking that they suggest that in fact is already being done. So, um, anyway, that's all, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eisman, for your testimony. Anybody else who wishes to come forward and testify at this time? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. We will now move into our Advisory Member Reports and Comments, and seeing as how we only have our Colonels with us tonight, we will go down here, um, to our Colonels. Colonel Campbell or Colonel Foster?
So, thank you, uh, this evening, I will be pretty brief, so last two weeks ago, we briefed, uh, what we were looking at from Alson. It's probably same as for Wayne Wright with respect to the government shutdown and, and the concerns that a lot of our families were possibly facing without being paid. So as we all know by watching the news, there was funding allocated to cover mid-months pay. So, good for now, don't know what the next two weeks will look like, but, um, just still in the back of our members' minds, and that will permeate down through the children as well, and they may have to... So, we're still watching that very closely, but that's all I wanted to share this evening.
Thank you, Colonel Foster, Colonel Campbell?
Yeah, I just first want to say thank you for your leadership, uh, and welcoming us on this team and this Board. Uh, appreciate your openness, your communication, uh, in what you do for military-connected students, so, thank you. Um, and then, uh, what Tim talked about there, um, we're looking towards the end of month on decision points based upon, uh, what could occur, what might or might not occur. So, um, we're looking out for, for those indicators, but, um, I appreciate the support from the community, uh, from the school district for our, for our families, and, um, really the civilian government employees that, uh, um, receive partial payments. Um, so it's not just the green suiters, but it's also the government employees that, uh, that we're looking for. So, I appreciate the time, and, uh, again, thank you so much, uh, for what you do for our families.
Thank you. Any questions for the Colonels? Seeing none, we will move on to Board Committee Reports. Do we have any reports from Board Members on Committees? Ms. Maple?
Um, the Policy Committee just met for the first time this semester, um, and we went over student discipline policies from our old, um... In the process of transitioning to this new format to get in line with AASB, it's a lot of policies being condensed into, um, three that we went over. It was, we got a lot of input from the Committee, and those are being, um, sent to the Board to look at in a work session. Um, so lots of suggestions for us to reflect on together as a Board. Um, there also was a suggestion in that Committee that when the Board is approving policy, that we consider having the ARs that are, um, relevant to that policy be in the consent agenda, just so that they are... An acknowledgement of the Board that we're aware of them, that they're there, that we've received them, and that they're available, um, easily for the Public, that if they're looking at a policy, we're, um, approving what AR backs that up, what administrative regulations back that up. Um, while knowing full well that that's not under our purview to approve those or write those. Um, and then, I have the pleasure of sitting on the Hutch Revisioning Committee, um, I don't know that if it's technically called a committee, um, and we've met a couple times. We just met last week over at Hutch, and that's made up of Hutch staff, of admin, community, workforce, union representation, um, and there's really great conversations happening about what the future of Hutch, uh, might look like to best serve our community. And that's a conversation that, in the process of all of the school closures and these budget crises that we've been experiencing, had to sort of be paused, and now that conversation is getting to re-engage, which has been really exciting to be a part of. Um, and those are, those are my reports back.
Any questions for Ms. Maple? Seeing none? Ms. Dulean, did you have a report to share for your Committee?
We do, um, so Thursday, October 9th, was the first meeting, uh, that Mr. Doran and I had for the Budget Committee Meeting, of which I chair, and, uh, Mr. Doran co-chairs with me. We, um, just to give the Public an update, the budget estimate that we have right now, which is an early estimate of the budget, um, deficit that we will be looking at, um, considering as a Board next spring, when we go into our budget conversation as a Board. It may be up to, uh, five million dollars, but it may be less, and it all depends on how numbers kind of shake out, uh, this fall. And those numbers are enrollment and, um, and other things like that. So, it, it's a much better outlook that we've had than we've had in previous years, and, uh, and I think that that is the result of the, um, very tough decisions that we made to, um, consolidate our resources according to our, um, enrollment needs. The Budget Committee Conversation this fall is going to result in a memo that will come forward to this Board in early December, uh, with recommendations of, that consider really two different things. What the Budget Committee, um, believes that we should invest in, and what the Budget Committee believes that we might need to scale back on. Um, and that's the culmination of the work that will come forward in December, and then, of course, the Board will consider those, uh, those recommendations as we enter the, um, budget cycle in February and March, for the April 1st deadline to the Borough. Um, with that, I just want to thank everybody for their time on the Budget Committee. The next meeting that we have is the 30th of October.
Thank you, Ms. Dulean, are there any questions for Ms. Dulean? Seeing none, is there any other reports from Board Members on their Committees? Seeing none at this time, we will move on, and we will come to my last President's Report. Mr. Doran?
Can I ask for a point of privilege where you do that?
I will allow you a point of privilege.
Thank you. And I'll extend that to any other Board Members who want to say something, but, yeah, I'm mindful of also, this kind of gives you the last word. But yeah, I'm mindful of also this kind of gives you the last word. So I teased you earlier today about the fact that it took a week to respond to one of my emails and I really wanted to respond back. You always ignore me. But in an email, you don't have the levity that may be conveyed. So I then thought, when I got a chance to tell you this morning exactly to your face, I then thought what I should start out with is, "Thank you for ignoring me." Okay? Sometimes that's appropriate. My wife appreciates it. She's not alone. But more seriously, do want to add to the comments that you've done a tremendous job on the board. It might be the teacher in me and educator, but it has been an absolute pleasure to watch you grow as a board member. We each go through, no matter what our backgrounds, we each go through a learning curve and you have done it in such a wonderful way. I have enjoyed our conversations. I've enjoyed the times of, you know, disagreement and not really disagreement, but different perspectives. But as was also mentioned in testimony, your bottom line is kids. Whether it's out on the rink or, you know, different places in town. I know you're involved in a lot of different areas with youth. But most importantly, over these three years here at the table, you keep students in mind. They are first. They are your concentration. And I have really valued the thoughtfulness and the care in your, in our debates that you've brought to our debates and in your care in making your decisions. You know, I could go on a lot of different ways. I could ask you lots of questions with an opportunity to follow up. But it has been a pleasure working with you and I've grown from that and I do really want to thank you for your service. And working as a follow-up to my point of, or my point of privilege, I would invite any other board members who wanted to comment.
Why, thank you. And I will now accept the point of privilege as well. President Burnett, you are brave and I think that that's really what I want to use that one word to describe you. You, it is not easy. It is not easy to make the decisions and put forth agendas and really tackle something head-on in such a direct and also brave way. But you knew that the only way through, the only way to get beyond a storm is to run right through it. And that takes bravery. And I deeply respect you for how you've conducted yourself through that storm because that's exactly what it's been. We have been through a storm and you have been running straight through it. And because of that, you've drawn a lot of heat because you made tough decisions that provided now the district with the stability where we can maybe consider, for the first time since 2017, investments into our schools. Had we not been brave with you at the helm, we would be looking at a bigger deficit this year. You refused to kick the can down the road, even though you knew that you would draw heat from it, and you have. But you did it anyway because it was the right thing to do. So that's a very good thing to be proud of and it has been my honor to serve alongside you and also with you at the helm. Thank you.
I'll say something. President Burnett, you and I have been on a bit of a journey over the past couple of years. Starting really during my campaign, when Ms. Maple and I were campaigning. And I just, you know, without bringing up all the old past stuff, I just want to say that as I've gotten to know you as a person and as a board member, I have been, I've been impressed. And as others have said, and I'm not going to top what Ms. Maple or Mr. Dorn said here. So they've covered all the most important points, but I want to emphasize that growth piece again because I have seen you grow so much. I've seen you really thoughtfully consider the information that's in front of you, change your opinions on things, learn, both from the trainings that we go to, but also just the experience internal. I've seen you listen to the public and I've seen all of those actions that are really what we want in our public servants. And for that, I appreciate you so much. And I'm also going to say that you are a fun person to hang out with. Not only the singing along to any song that happens to come on, but you know, just when we're out socializing, you're just, you're tons of fun and I appreciate that about you too. So, you know, I could either go on forever or just stop now. But I just, I really, you know, and this might, this might sound like a mixed compliment, but I've just, I've been surprised by how much I've enjoyed serving on this board with you sincerely. And I hope that you stay involved and that you're not a stranger. You want to sing along with me anytime, I'm here for it.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Anybody else want the point of privilege? All right.
A follow-up?
In true Dorn style, follow-up, Mr. Dorn?
Two very quick points. I want to thank you also on behalf of the Alaska Association of School Boards because you have served there and so it's not only the local community contributions you've made, but to our state. And I do want to recognize a couple of people that are really important. Your husband, who I will say was trained well by his principal, but he's here again supporting you and also your kids who have supported you over these years. So I know it's a team that you run on many, many fronts. And now I'm done.
And that brings me to my words. I really wanted to do this without crying, you guys. Jeez. So as I prepare to step away, I want to take a moment and thank each of you for the last three years. Serving along you has been one of the greatest and occasionally most chaotic honors of my life, truly. From our first meetings to the long nights of tough decisions, I've never lost sight of why we do this. It is our students, Mr. Dorn. Absolutely. Every late email, every spirited debate, every vote that we've made, it's always been about them. And I know that for each of you, that's the same at your course. Together, we have accomplished so much. We got a BSA increase. How amazing is that? From higher graduation rates, rising literacy and math scores, we did that. We did that together. We even managed to do it mostly on time and sometimes without fighting and with more than just snacks. As you continue this work, remember to keep your focus on respect and our students. They're always watching. They learn from how we lead. Sorry, guys. Before I go tonight, I wanted to leave a few words for each of you board members. Tim, I'm going to start with you, buddy. Tim, thank you for teaching me patience. Period. You have taught me how to question things with curiosity instead of accusation and I really appreciate that. You've reminded me that growth happens in the pauses. And Tim, those pauses are about the only breaks we get during your 12-page notes. Never change. This board needs you. Morgan, thank you for teaching me how to better organize my thoughts. I know that I tease you, but your beautiful nerdiness has paid off in ways that have truly strengthened not only this board, but myself. And you are a nerd and I love that about you. Also, if it wasn't for your electronic notebook, we'd probably need a new line item in the budget for paper refills. So there is that. Bobby, thank you for your passion and thank you for taking Maradi's spot and being goofy with me. The song lyrics, the dance parties, the laughter. I too have been surprised with the relationship that we have formed and the board members that we have become together. All these times will be some of the best that I will always cherish, truly. Just promise me one thing though, okay? I just need one promise from you. Please don't ever audition for Dancing with the Stars. The world is not ready. Loa, thank you for being the mom. You have always been and will always be a rock for each of us in our own ways. You're the only one on this board who can mom-tone an entire room into silence. I respect your superpower. And I love you to death, Auntie. And of course, Meredith, let's be real. You are the last person, the last person that I thought I would ever become close with. As Bobby said, there was tension there at the beginning. I wrote letters. I didn't want you on this board. That's real. I was nervous for you to join this board. But you have become my strength. You've become my right hand. You are my calm. You can take my frustrations and word it to where I didn't even know how I was trying to get my feelings out, yet you put it into words for me. I don't know where I would be without you. I don't know where I would be if I never had asked you on that lunch and I'm glad I did and I'm glad that we got to know each other. I'm so grateful that our friendship will last after this board. So, I can't give you unlimited Diet Cokes. I'm more of a Pepsi fan anyway, but I will always look at Diet Coke and love you to death. Board members, be kind to one another. Remember why you're here. Put the politics aside and listen, really listen, to each other, to our students and to our community. Because that's where the magic happens, baby. Not in the motions, not in the meetings, but in the moments when we remember that we are all on the same team and serving one cause and that is our students. Thank you for trusting me, for challenging me and for sharing this wild and wonderful ride. Looking ahead, I hope this board keeps its focus on the strategic plan. We've built a strong foundation, a really strong one. Now take it to the next level. Give our students more choice in their education. Be flexible in what learning looks like. Meet families where they are. It won't always be easy, you know that, but it's always worth it. In these last three years, they've been worth it. Thank you for letting me be a part of this work, this growth and this journey. I am proud of what we've accomplished and I'm even prouder of what you guys will accomplish. And I'm not going anywhere. I'll be watching. One last thing before I go and before I wrap up my final president's report. To Dr. Minart, thank you for not running away. If you know, you know. With that, I turn it over to you.
All right. Thank you, President Burnett. I had something sappy written out and then I'm just like, ah, that's not your style, so. Just really wanted to thank you for your leadership. You truly are a leader among leaders, not only here in Fairbanks, but around the state. I've gotten to witness that on a number of occasions, whether it be tough decisions within the boardroom that you come in with just this courageous attitude that only you could do. Or whether it was in front of us in the education where we're explaining, you know, the difficult challenges that Fairbanks has encountered year after year. And not bringing politics into the conversation, but really keeping our students at the forefront in terms of what our needs are and really showing the legislature that the funding that they're providing is inadequate for our students. Had some great memories traveling the state with you. You oftentimes bought your own ticket to Juneau to advocate for our students. Most recently, we were there last year and we were trudging around in snow and none of us had appropriate footwear and we were slipping all over Juneau. But made it to the Capitol and had some really excellent conversations. And doors were open because you were there with us. And you always had the right thing to say for the legislators to hear. And so just thank you for your fierce advocacy, for your leadership and then just your willingness to partner with me. The relationship between the superintendent and board president is a special one. We oftentimes wake up with text messages or go to bed with text messages. And if there was ever a time where I'm like, hey, can I have three minutes? You never once said no. You always picked up the phone and listened to me, was there for advice or consent. And so just thank you for your willingness to serve. It is a huge sacrifice, not only to serve on the board, but certainly to step into that president's role and not, you don't know until you're in the role. And so thank you for your willingness to step into that position. You know, I've earned a friend over this and a lifelong friend and I can't wait to continue to have coffee with you in the future. One last little story here recently. Melissa calls me up and she's like, I need five minutes of your time. And I'm like, whoa, this sounds serious. This doesn't usually happen, but my boss needs five minutes. I'll give you five minutes. And it was a particularly rough week. We were working through a number of things and she brings me a cold brew coffee and she's just like- And it was a particularly rough week, we were working through a number of things and she brings me a cold brew coffee and she's just like, keep up the good work, I want you to keep going. And so I think that'll stay with me forever and that's the type of leader you are, you're the cheerleader and willing to pick up everybody on your team. So, thank you for your service to Fairbanks and to our students here in Fairbanks.
Thank you, Dr. Minor.
Wanted to talk a little bit about Western Alaska. In the last week, you know, our thoughts have been with those impacted by that Typhoon Hanong in Western Alaska, which displaced more than 1,500 Alaskan residents. We want to express our heartfelt sympathies to the individuals, families and communities experiencing the hardship and uncertainty that storms like this bring. During this time, we've been in contact with the superintendent of the Lower Cusco Quim School District and the commissioner of education, working to understand how we as a district and community can support not only the students of Western Alaska, but the families that have been displaced. Currently, most of those families have been airlifted to Anchorage. Our student support services team has been in contact with partners in Anchorage and tribal organizations to understand who might be relocated to Fairbanks or choose to come to Fairbanks. We want families to know if you do choose Fairbanks as your community, whether it be for the entire winter or just a couple of weeks, we are ready to help. Fairbanks has come together like no other, there's all different kinds of supports in terms of winter geared, food support, transportation support, you name it, we've got it. And so we are ready to help support in any way we can. I do want to give a shout out to the commissioner's office and the governor's office, I think they've been really on point in this emergency and they've kept local leaders in the loop in terms of what was happening with the emergency and how we could best help here on the ground. And so I'll keep the board and the public updated as we work through that, but just wanted those families to know and Western Alaska that we're thinking of them and here and ready to support. In the last couple of board reports, I shared that we had an upcoming college and career fair that happened at UAF. It was a very successful event with over 400 students attending that. We had 60 vendors, colleges, universities, local labors, local businesses that were willing to meet with our students. And so again, just a huge thank you for UAF and Tara Devon for putting that opportunity on for our students. It's great for them to be able to meet with people that can change their lives after they leave our high schools. Wanted to advertise on Saturday, November 1st, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, the district will host a math and reading rally at Hunter Elementary. If you remember last year, we hosted our first ever parent conference and this will now be the second annual parent conference. This exciting event invites pre-K through third grade families and if you're outside of that range, you can certainly join us, but that will be the emphasis for a morning of learning, fun and collaboration. Teachers and educators from across the district will lead 10 interactive workshops designed to strengthen math and reading skills. And we know families and parents play a huge role in the learning of our students. Some of the titles of the sessions will be Bedtime Is The Best Time, What Do I Do With A Spelling List, Becoming Writers At Home, Boosting Elementary Math Fluency, and Unlocking Math Confidence. Families will leave the practical strategies and the hands-on activities to support their children's academic growth. And there'll be free childcare with snacks, games and activities. And so we hope to see everybody at Hunter Elementary, November 1st from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We'll also have some social media pushes to let people know about that incredible opportunity. Wanted to update, last time I talked about pillar interest teams from our strategic plan. We did a community push in seeing who would be interested in serving on our strategic plan pillar team of access and choice. We had over 149 respondents that are interested in serving on those two teams, which is a great response. Unfortunately, we won't have 149 slots. We will go through those applications here in the next couple of weeks and we'll let people know if they're on the team or not on the team. If you're not on the team, please stay engaged with the district. We'll have a number of opportunities to continue to help us implement our strategic plan. Please also be on the lookout for openings on our board committees and other opportunities within our schools. If you want to plug into what's happening in Fairbanks, I'm sure we have an opportunity for you and we know our schools are stronger when our community is involved. As part of our continued commitment to listening and improving, the Fairbanks Special Education Department is launching a new outreach effort called Special Education Hits The Road. This is where our district-level special education administrators, they'll travel throughout the community, landing at each one of our schools to engage directly with stakeholders. Parents, teachers, support professionals and school administrators are all encouraged to attend those open sessions and share their ideas. And providing meaningful opportunity to strengthen communication, build trust and ensure our supports are responsive for the needs of our students and families at each of our schools. If you've missed one of those dates and you want to show up at another school, you can do that, just make sure you're checking in at the office and they'll direct you to where our special education team, where our special education team is. I'd also like to talk about, we're still recruiting for special education paraprofessional positions throughout our district. That's one area that we can continue to use support in. Recently, we did bump the pay for our secondary paraprofessionals within our schools. We've also offered a $2,000 retention and recruitment bonus, so we're working hard to fill all of those positions. We know that it not only helps our students in the classrooms if we have the correct supports in place, but it also helps our teachers that are there working without para support. This position is incredibly rewarding and we have a new special education instructional support specialist that will help you get started. So, Cassie Castillo has been hired into that position, has been doing a phenomenal job this year. It's one of the things we worked with Essa on in terms of better onboarding for our paraprofessionals and ensuring upfront support is available for our paras. And so Cassie has drafted an initial handbook for special education paras and is oftentimes onsite the first day that paras arrived to ensure that they're supported and know what their job looks like. So, we have a financial incentive for paras as well as some wraparound supports through staffing. And then I want to end my report this evening. President Burnett, you talked about the increased graduation rates and I just wanted to pause on that for a second and really highlight that. LS I has done some analysis for us and got our data dashboard updated for our graduation rates. And pleased to share that last year we saw an increase of nearly 2%, which I've shared before. And over the past three years, our graduation rates have risen to an impressive 4.9%. This brings us to an all-time high of 82.6%, which is the highest graduation rate in the history of Fairbanks North Starbrough School District. So, really pleased about that. In addition, we celebrated our largest graduating class, so I was talking percentages, so largest, greatest percentage that we've ever had. But then also our largest graduating class since 2013-2014 year with 738 graduates last year, which is incredible given the decline of enrollment over the last 25 years in the district that we're still seeing a large amount of graduates here within Fairbanks. This achievement reflects not only the perseverance of our students, but also the dedication and innovation of our educators and support staff that make that happen every day. Also want to share, last year, one of our goals was growth for all and we were specifically focusing on our special education students and our Alaska Native students. And happy to share that we saw great increases within those subgroups as well. For our special education students, they achieved a record high graduation rate as well, improving by 21.7%. While Alaska Native students also reached an all-time high with a 12.3% increase in graduation rates. And so people have asked over the last, you know, few months, well, what has been attributing to the higher graduation rates? And really, I just want to thank our educators and the schools that are working through some new processes to ensure that we're tracking students that are credit deficient and ensuring that they understand what credit recovery opportunities are available for us. And then obviously, the hard work that our teachers are putting in, putting in day in and day out to ensure our students are successful. And then lastly, just a little shout out for CEC, they do an incredible job offering opportunities for credit recovery for our students and our graduation rates wouldn't be what they are without their support. And so wanted to end my report on a high note today and we'll be doing some more public outreach about these increased graduation rates and what it means for individual students. So, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Minor, for your report. Any questions from the board? Ms. Dullian.
Yes, I have a few, so I'll ask Alice one and then you can put me back in the queue. Do we have any incoming students from Western Alaska at all or are all those students going down to Anchorage?
Currently, no students have enrolled within the school district that I'm aware of, but our student support services team is aware of a few students and families that have relocated to Fairbanks. And so we're working with them to see what supports they need and if they do choose to enroll in one of our schools, how we can help with that process. And I will say, the Department of Education and the state has been great about reassuring districts that as our count period is ending for this school year, that if students are relocating to school districts or other school districts within the state, that we will receive funding to ensure that proper supports are in place for those students.
Follow up, Ms. Dullian?
I do, yes. If I can move to another one.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you so much for the SPED tour. I know that that is something that we heard a lot about and I know that one of the issues around our distressers that are on our SPED educators are really about open vacancies and just not having the amount of people that they need to do the job. And so thank you for making a financial incentive to recruit more paraprofessionals in the SPED world. I think that's a real positive step forward and so thank you. In regards to the SPED roadshow, is there anything that you can share as to kind of like top-level things that have been consistently shared from the community during those road tours yet? Or should we wait and ask for a report out later?
Not yet, because we're very early in the tour, but we'll definitely bring themes back to the board, whether that be through my superintendent report or a report from our special education department.
Any other questions, Ms. Dullian?
I do, I have one more.
Okay.
I know that we have had a lot, so I went to visit LAD and what I've heard back from them is that there's just a lot of increase of military-connected students that are enrolling this time of year. So, are we still seeing an increase in enrollment from our military-connected students?
Our enrollment from our military-connected families has been strong. I did receive some word from Janet and the colonels could corroborate this, but PCSs have been stalled out a bit nationwide, but we're certainly still seeing strong enrollments at Arctic Light and Anderson Crawford. And so, but I do think that there may have been some pause nationwide with PCSs.
Yeah, I can jump in, I know Tim has tenure on me, but yeah, as of 1 October, we received the headquarters DA operations order that directed that no PCS moves will happen based upon funding and allocation with that. So, if your orders were cut before 1 October, you can still move. So, we're still receiving, I think at newcomers this week, we had 23 families, last week was 55 families that came in to the installation, which is relatively consistent. This week, we saw a little bit of a decline, which we expect to kind of decline off the longer we go. However, once funding kicks back on, we expect PCSs to continue. We are starting to trail off on the PCS season, but for the most part, you know, families are still coming in. But yes, until funding is reallocated, no orders will be cut and PCSs are at a halt. So, hopefully that helps and I explained it better and it went in my head.
That's great, thank you.
Tim, any... Yeah, just one add-on, so what you're gonna see is when the money gets turned on, what those families that would have come in during this period of time, they're just gonna roll to the right. So, when we would typically see a lower amount of folks arriving, say in the winter, we may see an uptick as those orders get cut and the funding starts to go and people start to move this way. So, you'll just see it move to the right, some may fall out because timing just doesn't work and they get assignments in other places, so, but those will be few and far between.
And so yeah, thank you for noticing LAD, I mean, LAD was one of our bright spots of enrollment. The school year, their enrollment came in really strong. We actually added an additional teacher to LAD to help support that increased enrollment there.
Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. Several of the board members and yourself were at the Welding Advisory Committee today. And I think this fits with, as we spotlight students, the choir is a student spotlight and it's what our teachers and students are achieving as they go along and sharing that with the public. But also hearing two students, CTE students, talk about their experiences and their learning opportunities, not only in the classroom, but bridging out from classrooms with the inter-curricular activities. One of the thoughts I was just putting in the hopper, as I was telling my wife about it, she said, oh, well, the public needs to hear that. And so I know we were all impressed in what they shared and that maybe we can put that in the hopper for further spotlight, as we had the West Valley students spotlighting their work with recycling and applying their skills, their learning in the classroom. And then the CTE students as well as other students and now across the board, being able to share with us.
That would be great. I was thinking the same thing as those incredible students were up there presenting today and coincidentally, I was at North Pole High School yesterday, meeting with one of our CTE teachers out there and a couple of their students who also participated in Skills USA and had won their respective state championships and had also participated in nationals. And so multiple students across the district competing on a national level in career and technical education events. And so it would be great to highlight them here at the board level and I'll work with the president to make that happen.
Any other questions from board members? Seeing none at this time, thank you for your report, Dr. Minor. At this time, the board will take a brief 10-minute recess and then we will come back to get into Article 6. I'll bring it back in the morning, I have one at home. All right, we are now back from recess and we will be jumping back into our agenda with Article Six. The first half of Article Six instruction, BP 6000 through BP 6159.3, is proposed to be revised and is before the board for the second reading by administration. Good evening, Ms. Dillard.
Good evening, thank you, President Burnett. So yeah, this is the second reading of the first half of Article Six. And so the only visible edits that I kept in this packet is for the Policy 6146.5, differentiated requirements for individuals with exceptional needs, because I received, there was discussion at the last board meeting about improving that section, that was work that was done after first reading. So with that, I don't plan on us going through these policy by policy, but if you have any questions or comments or feedback on any individual policies, then I am ready for that.
Okay. Is there any questions, comments, concerns on policies from board members? Mr. Dorn?
Just to comment, I want to thank the administration and Stiller in particular for capturing the slight changes that were made first reading and the rewording that was of the 6146.5. As I had raised that issue, I just wanted to let the board know and administration that I'm comfortable with that rewording. I think it's definite improvement and clarity. And since that intent was clearly there from the last, our last motion and action on first reading, I feel real confident with this going forward as second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Anything from any other board members? Seeing nothing, I would take a motion.
Move to approve second reading, public hearing, and adoption of the first half of Article Six instruction, Board Policy 6000 through Board Policy 6159.3.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. We will now open it up for public testimony. Is there anybody who wishes to testify on this item? Seeing nobody, public testimony now closed, we'll come back to the board. Is there anything further from any board members on this item? Seeing nothing, Ms. Richardson, would you please call the vote on the second reading of Article Six?
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Campbell?
Yes.
Mr. Dorn?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dullian?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on, we will go into our new business with the Pearl Creek Steam Charter School application on October 6th and October 14th, 2025. The board held work sessions to review and discuss the Pearl Creek Steam Charter School application. The charter is now before the board for approval. Is there anything from administration, Dr. Minor?
Nothing additionally from administration.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Minor. Is there anything from board members at this time? Seeing nothing, so here's what we're going to do. Per Board Policy 9323, we will open up public testimony on Pearl Creek Steam Charter School application. So with that, is there anybody who wishes to come forward and testify on Pearl Creek at this time? Seeing none, public testimony is now closed. We will come back to the board and I will ask for a motion. Ms. Dullian?
I move to deny the Pearl Creek Steam Charter application and direct the administration to prepare a written decision for the 4 November 2025 regular school board meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion from the board? Ms. Dullian?
Yeah, if I can speak to the motion.
Go ahead, Ms. Dullian.
Okay.
Point of order. Motion should be in the positive rather than the negative. The implication is on the negative.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn, for your point of order. According to legal, this is actually the way this needs to be done. We have sat with both sides, with the Borough Attorney and with Cedar's office, and this is the language and the way that this needs to be done to have an actual decision on Pearl Creek. So this is the proper language and the correct way for it to be done. Ms. Dullian, if you could please continue.
Okay, thank you. I recommend that the application, so the motion that I put forward, is to be not, to be denied based on concerns related to fiscal planning and alignment with state statute. And if I can speak to four of the reasonings that I've put into place. Insufficient plans for enrollment growth and budget implications. The application outlines a plan to expand from 352 to 468 students over six years, a 33% increase. However, this growth strategy is not fully developed within the application and presents significant fiscal implication for both the charter school and the district. As discussed during the October 6th and 13th work sessions, the proposed enrollment plan includes in 2026, 54 kindergarteners, 66 first graders, 44 second graders, 44 third graders, 48 in each fourth, fifth, and sixth grades. That's 352 students. It also includes an annual increase of approximately 22 to 24 students in grades two through six, resulting in a total of 116 additional students over six years. This level of growth exceeds the addition of one classroom teacher per year and would require increased staffing and support in areas such as special education, nutrition services, custodial services, and general material supplies and equipment. The application does not provide a fiscal plan to address these needs and gross, growth, which raises concerns about the sustainability of the proposed budget. There is also an incomplete facility planning and budget risk. The application references a lease agreement arrangement with either the district or borough, but does not include specific terms, conditions, or costs. This does not meet the statutory requirement for a written plan regarding the charter school's facility. In addition, the budget assumes no lease cost while allocating $271,250 for facility-related expenses, based on two-year-old district records and supplemented by an unexplained $105,543 for potential repairs. This lack of detail and reliance on outdated or estimated figures introduces substantial budget uncertainty. Given that other charter schools in the district average approximately $400,000 annually in facilitated-related expenses for much smaller sites, the absence of a defined facility plan presents a material financial risk and undermines the viability of the proposed budget. Third, there's unsound admission procedures. The admission process described in the application does not comply with state law. Alaska's statute requires that charter schools admit all eligible applicants or when oversubscribed, use a random drawing. The language in the application suggests an alternative admissions process would be used if demand exceeds available space, which would not meet statutory requirements. Fourth, there is a lack of plan for gifted students. The application lacks sufficient detail regarding services for gifted students as required by Alaska statute. The provided description references the general purpose of the ELP program, but does not outline specific or actionable plan tailored to the needs of gifted learners. A more detailed explanation is necessary to evaluate how the school intends to meet the statutory requirement.
Thank you, Ms. Dullian. Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Thank you. I will speak in support of the motion to deny the charter. First, the charter pupil-to-teacher ratio, the PTR, exceeds the statutory maximum target of 23 by proposing a PTR of 24 students in each classroom on average. The charter application fails to provide a detailed plan for the gifted students and also a sufficient plan for special education students. The charter application does not have a facility lease at this time, which presents a financial risk. And approving the charter application will put undue financial pressure on the district. And the charter admission procedure is not an acceptable lottery system per state statute. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Anything from other board members? Mr. Burgess?
Thank you. I'll be voting in favor of this motion as well. The primary reason is really equity on the district level. Financial cost to the district is high. It would require cuts to the district budget that would most likely mean something like increasing class sizes district-wide by two students or potentially closing a different school. So that's a clear equity issue. Operational cost, like not just the, the financial cost, but also the, the challenges in operations, district operations should be considered. Like, not just the, the financial cost, but also the, the challenges in operations, district operations should be considered. There's, would be a need to shift around teachers and students, fill vacant positions that would be created and just basically major disruptions when we already face staffing challenges and other logistical problems. There are claims that the school will increase enrollment, but I don't think those claims really add up under scrutiny. There's just too much uncertainty in the numbers. And even if the numbers do pan out, the most optimistic projections for attracting out-of-district students would not make up for the expenses that are, will be incurred. Other than the budgetary issues, schools were closed this past year to bring stability to our district with the idea that we can hopefully reinvest funding in programs that have been lost due to insufficient funding for many years. Or to invest in other district-wide initiatives that would benefit all students. Opening this charter school would preclude that investment. I'd also want to note that we have been contacted by many people through email and telephone who are opposed to the charter because of the impacts to the district as a whole. Today alone, we received at least four emails asking us not to approve the application. Over the past several months, we've received several others. In addition to the impacts of the district at large, I agree that there are problems with the application itself. And I'm not gonna go through section by section, take a while. But to focus on some primary problems, there are equity issues within the proposal in addition to the equity issues that it would cause for the district as a whole. I see a lot of positive intent in this application. There's, there's a really strong intention to be inclusive of all students. But the budget just doesn't reflect this. There's not enough sped support, as others have pointed out. One teacher for an estimated seventy sped students is not a realistic view of the needs. And I don't think district practices are really truly taken into account when considering admission of sped students. There was also an intent expressed to include cultural programming. Things like language immersion, bringing in elders from the Alaska Native community and so forth. Great ideas. They're not budgeted in this application. And there's no discussion about the logistics, nor did I see any evidence that the people and community organizations that would really be needed, that, that they would need to rely on to do this. I see no evidence that they've been consulted or brought into the plan or invited to help create the plan. When it comes to language immersion, that's, that's quite a lofty goal. There is no discussion of logistics there or even a consideration of whether there are instructors in the community who can take this on and would be willing. I wanted to touch on curriculum because we didn't talk much about it in work sessions. And, you know, again, great ideas here for the STEAM curriculum, but the way that it's presented in the application. As chair, as, as someone who's served as chair for the curriculum committee for the past two years, I can say that the way that it's presented in this application is really not consistent with typical curriculum outlines or the way curriculum is typically presented. Nor do I see any clear connections to state standards. I also think there seem to be some unresolved logistical challenges in the implementation of the curriculum. The budget, budget is, seems to me to be incomplete. There are errors in the summation of expenses. Line items for certain, certain things that, that don't seem completely explained to me, almost seem arbitrary. And I don't see any obvious cushions for unanticipated expenses. For example, there's no accounting for the cost of the lease. And the utility estimates, as others have pointed out, seem low. This week, the Borough Assembly has an item on their agenda to pay for the utilities for this building once it's turned over to them in December. And they're estimating eighty-two thousand dollars for utilities for an empty building for a little more than six months. So if you extend that about twelve thousand dollars a month for a full year, it's getting pretty close to what the application has budgeted. But, but will likely exceed that amount. So overall, I think there's some great aspiration in here, some great ideas. But the plan is lacking in detail and I just don't see how it gets us to what is envisioned. I'm concerned not only that the vision would not be met, but that the school could fail entirely. And I, I do feel that it would be irresponsible for us to stand up this school for all those reasons I've expressed. Ultimately, I do hope this can be looked at by everybody as a learning experience. I think the challenges that this well-intentioned group encountered while working on a plan to stand up a single school are similar to those that the district faces as a whole, but on a much larger scale. A vision is important, but we have to be realistic. It's easy to dream big. But making dreams reality requires resources, well-developed plans that realistically account for those resources, and a strong and enduring commitment to the long term. So for those reasons, I, I cannot support this application at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. I want to start by recognizing the loss of a neighborhood school and the very real and continued emotional impact that has on families. That Pearl Creek has not been the only one, neighborhood schools that have been facing this. And I think it brings to the fore that this is something that due to declining populations in our borough and our state and demographics for school age. Young people, that this is a reality that we face along with the lack of funding for public education that we've seen in this state. I also want to recognize the, as also noted, the very positive intent for those who have been involved in this effort. They have really been thoughtful in trying to problem-solve the inclusiveness for the demographics of the school. And the, and trying hard to get an understanding of what's all involved. I think that's a lot of effort and thought that's gone into that. But I also recognize there was a collective decision made in the spring. And then to, to close Pearl Creek Elementary. And then actions were taken that, and have been taken in the best interests of the district and all the families with an intent to bring some stability for families and school communities, particularly at the elementary level. Redistricting happened and resulted in the movement of well over a thousand other students besides those in the, the closed schools. And then budget considerations were made that have a lasting impact on trying to preserve as many services for students as we can and to give them the best education. With those introductory comments, going through the application itself. As I've stated before, I don't believe that a charter is the solution to get to the various concerns, but the application itself left me with a number of uncertainties. One is the uncertain size. There's a range as you read the application that actually would authorize anywhere from three hundred and fifty-two. Arguably, at one point, it says one fifty would be the minimum, but three hundred and fifty-two as high as six hundred and twelve students. If you actually read, in, in terms of reading as the expansion plans would grow. And that's an increasing financial commitment upon the district, which makes each successive year more uncertain in terms of what budget would be available to the district and the variety of schools. I do have real concerns about the enrollment and lottery plan. It has a grandfather-in-class, which really says every student who attended previous, the previous Pearl Creek Elementary would be given a priority in, in this case for entry into the school. There's also a grandchild clause, which opens the door to be twenty, thirty, forty years down the line as a priority. The, and specific designations of students by program title, which may or may not really be applicable in terms of those students at a, at a new charter. I do have share the concerns that I mentioned about facility. Particularly, my view on it is this has a facility dependence built in to the, the application. And there's no commitment or real indication of that facility being available or planned then for an alternate site. I am concerned about transportation. Transportation is presented really as part of the integrality, being integral to the hopes to make this a very inclusive school. And the reality is there is no transportation available in the foreseeable time. And part of that does land on the doorstep of the state, who is, does not fund us fully for that to even consider expanding it. I do have budget questions, particularly over the lease figure, but there are other gaps and others have addressed those. The other thing that comes to mind very much is this, looking at the staffing. It is very similar to a neighborhood school and the previous school that is regularly referenced throughout the application, Pearl Creek Elementary, and referenced in our conversations. Which brings me to the very specific question that's asked to be answered in the application, that a charter should clearly state how it is specifically different, or the wording is how it specifically differs from other educational options. And I, I see a lack of differentiation. It's the same structural model as the previous Pearl Creek Elementary, which I do want to say was a good school and people should be proud of it. But in terms of, it is not significantly different or specifically different from other schools in our district. Beyond the application then itself, what are the impacts and trying to take that in? If we were to take on another facility, another school, whether that's leasing or the district operating it directly, it's an added cost. And we have worked hard as a district to deal with the financial realities and to provide the best opportunity for, for students across our district. Not just as a lump, but as individual and, and community groups through that. The, I can only factor in at this point that if we were to take on another school in our district, it would hasten the closure of another neighborhood school. Especially in the face of state and borough declines, as I mentioned, in population and student demographics. I'm also very concerned about the impact on staffing, competition for limited resources. There are several staff members on, in this plan that frankly, the district has struggled with, especially with specialists. And we do know that we are short of teachers and educators and this provides additional competition that then goes against every school in our district. I think it also destabilizes our effort to provide a stable scenario for families district-wide. Again, does it start a ripple effect that if students move to this school, this charter school, what does it do to the other schools? And I do know that there are many families who also miss their previous school. They're making adjustments as, as all these students, former Pearl Creek students are and families to a, a new place. And so I, I think there's a real concern there. There's also ongoing financial impacts to the district in terms of our services, our programs, and the remaining schools. We have made real efforts to try to minimize the impacts in classrooms, but they are being felt. And unless we can continue to consolidate our finances and we're going to continue on a roll at a, of reductions rather than the possibilities of investments to our community. And finally, I'm very mindful and somewhat prompted by the editorial done last Sunday by the news minor that I thought really captures some things. It's, you know, and just their bullet points about looking inward as we as a district, as administration, as a board, as individual school communities to say, what can we do to make our schools more appealing, to, to get out the message of how our students are doing? I mentioned that with the welding, the CTE students this morning, who was presented to a small advisory committee. Their bullet about looking forward. We still are facing budget cuts, budget limitations. We hope the state will come through with more, with the support of the governor, that we will start really investing, but until such time, we are looking at budget limitations. But they also talk about that community engagement is key, and that's what I'd like to do. The answer tonight, this is not the end of the conversation. The folks in our community, and at this moment particularly those behind, who have worked hard on this charter, they have prompted, supported a community conversation that's broader. And I think we really need to say thank you for doing that. Your hearts have been in this. The, you've given us things to really push forward, our strategic plan and the implementation of that. The, starting of these pillar advisory committees, the references to our, our values are really key to the conversation that you've brought forward and also put things on the table that help with problem-solving. And how we, this can impact each of us, each school community, and that we keep that going forward. I am so impressed with the conversations that I've had sometimes with individuals, sometimes with small groups over the last year that, that you've shared with me, that you've shared with others, that you've brought to this room. The committees you put together to look at different things. I'm particularly mindful at the moment of the Equity Committee. who put together a set of recommendations, which are not only for one school, one community, they're for our district. And I hope that as those who shared with the district and can become part of our conversations around their strategic planning, especially our growth, prolonging, our welcoming of students, that we really can take advantage of that energy that's been out there, that care, the, the ideas that have been worked forward. So that we really do move forward together. We don't have the wherewithal for another school to come on. But we do have the wherewithal to really come together. And what each of you offer to the new schools your children have gone to, I know it can be hard, but I also know the, the value and the worth that can happen. And the work that each of the receiving schools have done, as I've visited several of them this fall, preparation. The real desire is to say, hey, how do we blend sometimes staffs together, families together? We have traditions, we have new things that we're trying and we're working to, to build on that community, build our community that is inclusive. And so I just really want to say thank you for the opportunity that you've pushed us for a lot of thinking, pushed me for a lot of thinking. But I'll, I'll leave my comments there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. I will finish things off before we call for the vote. You know, I really actually looked forward to supporting this application. I really did. I really do support schools of choice. I think they're great options for communities when everything lines up. And everything just does not line up with this due to many of the reasons that my fellow board members here have stated. But the biggest one for me is our loss of enrollment. We are losing enrollment. It's not to other programs. It, it's not to here in our community. It, it's to out of state. People are leaving in droves right now. You can track enrollment. Back twenty years ago, we had close to seventeen thousand students. Now we have just over eleven thousand. That is a huge loss of students in our district with this huge footprint that we have, that we have had to consolidate to match what our enrollment is. And opening another school, like Mr. Doran stated, would have a backlash of an immediate closure of another. It would raise class sizes. There, there's so many things that leave me in the same position with my fellow board members. And so I also do not support approving this application at this time. So with that, Ms. Richardson, I will call for the vote. I would like to remind board members that to deny the charter, the vote will be yes. If you vote no, that will approve the charter. Is that clear? Mrs. Richardson, would you please call the vote?
Colonel Foster?
Yes.
Colonel Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Carol Hubbard?
Yes.
Mr. Doran?
Yes.
Ms. Maple?
Yes.
Mr. Burgess?
Yes.
Ms. Dullian?
Yes.
Mrs. Burnett?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried.
Thank you. Moving on, we will go into our information and reports with our custodial update. Ms. Jay Kerian, Facilities Management Department Executive Director, will provide an update report on ABM custodial services. We do have ABM members here in attendance. We have Dean Fuke, sorry if I mispronounced that, Vice President of Operations, Ty Yun, Alaska Operations Manager, Art Salinas, District Manager, and Ricky Dobbs, Senior Vice President. Good evening, Ms. Kerian.
Good evening. Thank you for having us here tonight and us providing you with a custodial update. With me, I have Mark Roper, our Custodial and Grounds Manager, as well as our ABM representatives. So here's just a highlight of our agenda. So a quick introduction, a transition of how everything's going, a brief information on scope of work, contractual accountability, our processes that we have put in place on the school district side, and then the conclusion. So I'll talk a little bit about the custodial transition in our next slide. I've got a little bit more information there. So I just kind of want to talk about the, some of the approaches that we've put in place at the school district. So we've put clear services built into the contract. Our priority was making sure that we put it the cleanliness standards following the APA Level ISA guidelines, as well as regular reporting and accountability. And why did we choose ABM? They are a national leader in custodial services and they have a proven track record with school districts in the lower forty-eight. So this slide talks about the transition. So the transition from in-house to custodial services and outsourcing with ABM is progressing steadily. We are experiencing some challenges and adjustments during this transition period. Some positive outcomes include improved efficiency and consistency in service delivery at some locations, several locations, I should say. Some locations are lagging behind and we are actively working with ABM to address these issues and ensure improvement. The positive steps in the transition include regular performance reviews, open communication with ABM management. Ongoing staffing and oversight issues need to align with our expectations to improve in quality. So this slide just talks a little bit of our scope of work and the key responsibilities that we put in place. Perform daily, weekly, monthly cleaning, sanitizing all of our instructional spaces as well as our administrative spaces as well. Provide the floor care services and maintain restrooms with appropriate cleaning. So this is just a really brief snapshot of, of what we're required in the scope of work. I'm not going to read this whole slide. There's a lot of information in there. But this one just gives you a quick snapshot of what the responsibilities are for the day custodians. So our day custodians maintain the high-traffic areas during the day, as well as providing the support to the schools and the staffs during the daytime, as well as snow removal, event and logistics support, health and safety support, as well as being the communication liaison between the building to the management staff. And then ABM's responsibility is to make sure that the school is ready for the next day. So here's some of the things that FMD, FMD, I should say, School District has put in place. So we do have daily oversight. So our day custodians comes in and performs daily inspections of the facilities. They do pick three or four classrooms, couple of restrooms, and they do, and then I'll get, I'll explain more into, you'll see in my slides. I'll, I'll give you a more explanation on, on how that works. They document all the deficiencies and then they pass that along to the custodial manager, who then notifies ABM of any deficiencies. Our coordinators will then go out and verify some complaints and then they will recheck any performances that we send to ABM. We do a follow-up inspection to confirm that issues have been resolved. We also do have weekly meetings with ABM and if needed, we do have contact with them daily as well. And then we review our progress and the performance. So this section just really talks about our contractual accountability. As mentioned, we do our weekly performance review meetings with ABM. We implement any corrective actions issued by FMD that needs to be addressed promptly. We document all our QC reports and that we send over to them. This slide is an example of our service summary sheet that was implemented into the contract. And I won't go into too much detail, but just a really key highlight. This talks about performance objectives. So we have an expectation on the service summary one. These are all the performance, these are all the items that need to be done daily. You cannot have more than five deficiencies per month and that we require you to reperform that within twenty-four hours. So, and then section two, same thing, as, as well as three and four. Here is how FMD deals with non-performance. So we are holding ABM accountable through oversight. And then this is our escalation process for underperformance. So we look at missed cleaning tasks. So every duty is itemized. We, we talk about the frequency list that we've put out, including in our contract. And some examples are if restrooms are not cleaned, if the floors are not vacuumed, we're going to hold ABM accountable for that. Failures to meet standards. So we did outline our ISA standards as well, our school district standards. And then we're overlooking the daily, the weekly, monthly task as well as annual. Our top priority is health and safety. We're looking at if restrooms are not cleaned, if nurses' offices are not done. So we're going to hold ABM accountable for those non-performance as well. We're also holding them accountable for staffing shortages or no-show coverages. So if a contractor fails to show up for a shift and that, their responsibility is to make sure that they shift, put their staff in place. And if they fail to have a staff in place, then there's consequences for that too. And there's also failure to meet quality inspections. So if we're not receiving inspections from our contractor, we're also going to look at that as non-performance. So here's some of our processes that we've implemented. So we created a frequency list, which shows the daily, monthly, weekly, annual tasks that is required. And then we do, we have a custodial site inspection sheet. I just want to remind everyone before I go into the custodial concern form, this is not, this is something that we haven't done before. This is very new for us. So we're, we're all in a transition period. So I just kind of want to highlight, this is completely new for all of us. So, and then some other things that we've also implemented is key performance indicators and some other FMD processes that we've put in place. So this slide just highlights an example of what our frequency list looks like. We did break it down in terms of elementary, middle, high school, as well as administrative buildings. We've also then further broken it down into areas and then the level of cleaning that is required in that area. So as you can see over here, so daily desks, tables. So we have about what, twenty-two pages of this, just covering every area. So we've broken it down by classrooms, nurses' office, libraries, gym area, so forth. This highlights our new custodial site inspection sheet. So this is FMD's site report that we do provide to our day custodians. And then we call it our Quality Assurance Plan. So our day custodians come in and they'll do their initial inspections, looking at the requirements that is on this list. They then pass this along to the coordinators, who will verify the deficiencies that the day custodian has noted. Then if there are deficiencies that they have verified, that information gets sent to the custodial manager, who then passes the information over to ABM. ABM will then reperform and the coordinators will then re-verify that it was actually completed by ABM staff. And again, I just want to point out, this is something new. We've not had a custodial concern form in the past. This is something new that we've created for this fiscal year. So we did create a custodial concern form at the beginning of the school year. That information was sent out district-wide. We have shared this form with the union. I know there was a little bit of confusion because the union did create their own form. We have now, April, sorry, the SA Union President now has access to this. So whenever complaints are funneling through, they actually get to see the concern. We haven't received, if we, if the complaint is going through the union form, we're not seeing that. So if they're passing that to us, we're able to see the complaint. But if not, not passing the information to us, we're not able to see it. So we've agreed that this is the custodial concern form that we're going to use moving forward. This is just some quick data snapshot. I did do this as of September thirtieth. So currently, the complaints that we are receiving is approximately two percent. We have received about maybe twenty, thirty more complaints since then. But as you can see, that approximate percentage number is still really low district-wide. We are noticing a trend that most of the complaints are centered around the vacuuming and the trash. And that Lathrop High School has seen the highest complaints. And we have done our very best to make sure that we respond within twenty-four hours. Here are some key performance indicators that we've put in place that we can measure how well the contract is going. So one of the things that we want to look at is customer satisfaction. We want to be able to measure those through surveys to gauge overall satisfaction with the cleanliness of our schools. We also want to gauge, you know, the complaint volume, like the number of complaints received and their resolution rate. Our target is ninety-five percent of requests are addressed within twenty-four hours and I think that we're doing pretty good on that. Our inspection scores, we're also going to be looking and auditing our inspection, quality insurance, quality assurance plan, and assess how they're adhering to the cleaning standards. We want to be able to maintain an average score of ninety percent across all facilities. And then also, we're looking at task completion rate. So we want to make sure that the tasks that are assigned for each building and for each area is being completed on the days that are scheduled to be cleaned. This one just talks about, a little bit about our FMD processes. So we do have three different processes that's happening. So step one, our day custodians. So they do a random inspection. They come in, they will do a random inspection of some classrooms and bathrooms. They'll go through the inspection site sheet that we created and they're going to list the areas and see what met standards and what needs improvements. This form does have to be sent into FMD by a certain time. Then our coordinators will receive that information and then go back out to the schools and verify that these are indeed areas that, you know, if our day custodian has specified that this thing, this item needs improvement, our coordinators go and verify to make sure that that is correct. So that's one process that we have in place in terms of quality control. And then we have the process for complaints. So our staff are able to go into the custodial complaint form or concern form and they, they fill out the form and then we receive it. Once we receive it, then our, Mark, our custodial manager then sends out the coordinators to verify those complaints. And then once they're verified, they then, he will then send them out to ABM for re-performance. And then there's our quality control. So while the day custodians doing their inspection, our coordinator is also doing their inspection. So there's many levels of inspections that, that we're doing simultaneously. So our coordinator oversees all our day custodians' inspection forms and they also oversee the re-performance by ABM. Each of our coordinators will visit about fifteen schools daily. So we have about two coordinators and they split, they split the buildings in half and then they'll go and inspect their areas. They do inspections, they will document and report and they'll monitor all the performances, as well as enforcing compliance. And then the other things that they do is manage corrective actions. They'll communicate with the custodial manager on any action plans that's needed, as well as training the day custodians. And I just kind of wanted to highlight this to remind everyone that the approximate savings to contracting out is about three million dollars. And the reason why I put this out here is because I've actually visited some schools and I've actually connected and spoke with some teachers and I've had a lot of people ask me, are we really saving, are we really having any savings? Are we really saving money? And my answer is yes. The approximate saving is three million. And I also do want to say that we haven't had any change orders. Just wanted to highlight some key areas that we've noticed or we've had feedback from the schools. So we've received positive feedback from some principals, some staff, and then also a board member regarding the quality inconsistency of custodial services at some of the locations and FMD's effort for efficiency. Several school sites have reported that classroom cleanliness has significantly improved compared to previous years. And many locations have developed. And many locations have developed great working relationships with ABM staff, resulting in increased trust and a smoother day-to-day communication. Multiple sites, and this is personally to me as well, have expressed a clear preference for retaining their current ABM staff citing consistent performance and a positive impact on the overall learning environment. We are seeing strong product progress. Many sites are thriving. And there are other sites that are receiving the focused support needed to get there. So we do recognize that some schools still need help to get to the higher standards that we're looking for. And then with my conclusion, I wanna say while outsourcing custodial services presents initial challenges, the district's rigorous standards and established process ensure high-quality, safe environments for our students and staff. FMD maintains a strong oversight to ensure contractor accountability. And then with that, we'll take questions after I have ABM do their um little presentation.
I um like Jay mentioned, I'm Dean Fuchs uh with ABM. And uh, you know, I'd like to just start off by just saying, giving you a compliment just on the, the, the passion and the spirit that we see in this district. And even just in this meeting today, uh just very moving, I thi- I think for all of us. And uh, and that's something that's, that's very special. Um, you know, and I, I uh, with ABM in my career, I've worked with a lot of public schools and you don't necessarily see that everywhere. So just to mention to you, you, you have something very special. And that makes it really a special honor for us to serve you too and to serve staff and students. Um, and you know, it's really a people business and it's really when, you know, when people uh, when really want to do good things for, for other people that, you know, they, I think, provide their best in the service industry. And so thank you. I think having that spirit is, is so much a part of providing great gen- great custodial services. Um, we uh, just as you're aware, uh, we've been serving you here under this agreement for about four months now. Um, out of a one-year agreement. Um, and even though it's a one-year agreement, we are, we are spending and we are investing as if it was like a five or ten-year agreement. And um, you know, we, I want you to know on behalf of all of ABM, we stand behind our commitment to you and we will be here uh supporting you for as long as you will have us. We hope it's beyond that year, but we'll be here as long as you will have us. And you've got the commitment of the entire company uh behind that. We're here, you know, today to, to back that up and show that to you. Um, there's a few things, uh initiatives that we've got uh really over the next few weeks we'll continue to roll out. I'll share with you here and the table short, share a little bit more information. But one of our commitment to uh increasing our staffing, and that has been a little bit of a challenge, probably a little bit more than we would expect, you know, expected, you know, I would say. Um, and uh, we are working on really making sure that we've got uh sufficient staffing so that when, as we have substitutes, if we have people that call off sick, and we have had a lot of those. Um, but then we've got people to replace them and we're not necessarily having to do it, you know, with overtime or something like that. And we're still doing that, but you know, sometimes it's taking overtime or taxing, you know, the staff that are there to do that. And so our initiative is to really to get those substitutes in place. Um, and even if it's the ones, if even if they're what we call rovers that just come in and we just know, they know they're gonna come in and get a day's, you know, worth of pay and we're gonna assign them, you know, where, where somebody's off that day. So that's an initiative that we have. Um, another one is uh, a, a commitment to our training and increasing, really, you know, bringing the, the best uh tools to our employees, making sure they've got the right training. We've got them all through initial training, but really that seasoned custodian, the custodian that, that knows how to respond to every situation and every cleanup job, you know, that does take continued seasoning and training. And we're working on, you know, making sure that they, they're receiving that and uh that they're doing a good job of that. Um, and then also reconfiguring our runs to be as efficient as we can and really continue to provide the best value to the school district, to staff and students and, and to be able to provide flexibility in the future too. So whatever dollar you choose to spend, that we can come up with a plan to give you the best value possible for that under whatever circumstances, you know, we're, we're working through together. Um, and then also district-wide implementation of a quality control or our, we, our quality control program, what we call our, our site program, and continuing to roll that out and make sure that as we have corrections that need to be made, that we're finding them, hopefully before the school, school custodians or staff or students, you know, find them. That we're really the ones policing and making sure those things are happening. Um, and then also an ongoing investment in equipment uh and supplies and the, the tools that are needed to do that great job. Now we, some equipment we are buying from the school district, a lot of it we've brought in new. And we're really analyzing, you know, the best tools for each school and each uh, each job that we're doing at each school. So that'll be part of our initiative that we're continuing to roll out over the next few weeks. And probably just lastly then, just a regular client business review and really a check-in to make sure we're seeing the same thing you're seeing and being responsive to the things you need us to be responsive to. So with that, I'll hand it over to, to Jay to talk a little bit more about our, our talent acquisition and other initiatives.
Thank you, Dean. And uh, just to work off what Dean was mentioning, uh, once again, thank you guys for your time and having us here. Uh, it's been a great partnership thus far and we're looking to continue those efforts. As far as challenges, um, I know Dean mentioned recruiting being one of them. Uh, as far as uh, you know, it gets pretty cold here in Fairbanks, is what I've been noticing. And uh, uh, we do experience some call-outs every now and then. Uh, as far as some positives to start off, uh, we've been consistently recruiting uh and we have a ready-to-go pipeline. Um, whether they're in our background uh check or whether they're in the school um uh district's background check, we keep funneling through that process and having them on a first-come, first-served basis. And basically whoever's ready to uh begin work, uh, we're having them start every Friday. We have a um, a new hire orientation. We get them started every Friday until we reach the numbers that we need. And our plan is to continuously uh hire until we have reliable and consistent staff and also have a backup staff for uh on-call, for uh, um, for people who call out, uh, people who are sick, uh, so on, so forth. Now, so we're consistently adding people on a weekly basis. Uh, we just added three more people to our team this last, or this Monday. And uh, from there, we're also uh focused on continuing that pipeline until once again, uh, we have the people, not only the number that we want, but the quality of people that we want. Uh, people who truly care about these schools, what they're doing, making a difference. And that's uh people who align with your guys' beliefs in terms of what you really want uh at, going on at these schools. Now, as far as our challenges, the only challenge that we seem to have run into is uh the background process for certain individuals. Uh, of course, we have our ABM process, but then we have another process going through the school district. Uh, and we completely understand that because we do understand that uh these are children that we're dealing with and we wanna ensure that um, that each of these individuals are trustworthy and uh fully backed. So uh, uh, most of this hurdle has been cleared up uh through the district and our ABM team. So we've gone through um, uh, most of these challenges. So I, I don't foresee it happening again. It's been cut down a little bit um smaller now. We're looking at two to three weeks, which is positive. And uh, I'm seeing a lot of improvement there as well. Now, as far as the quality assurance plan, um, we're entering a, a different phase now and we're, we wanna make sure that consistency is what you guys are getting at these schools now. Uh, we do have several schools that are doing great. Uh, but of course, we saw some schools uh that are areas of opportunity for us, uh such as Lathrop. And as far as our quality assurance plan, uh, we want to give you guys the oversight that we need. And uh, with that, we have the site program that's coming online. And uh, with that said, we're gonna do the building inspections. We're gonna make sure that uh they're done on daily assessment and uh after our shifts to ensure that everything's being made um up to standard. And like Dean mentioned, we wanna find things before you guys do. So that way, uh, there's less on our, on the district side of things to do. Uh, we wanna prioritize safety. Uh, we have a program called SWAP, uh, which ensures that uh any chemicals are stored safely, uh, any tripping hazards, you know, while we're mopping that cones are being used, uh, so on, so forth. We wanna ensure that safety is our number one priority. Um, we also have an ABM Way hub training. Uh, this is open to all of our uh, our staff. And basically, they have an opportunity to look up different things, um, such as bloodborne pathogen training, uh, so on, so forth. But that's also included in our NHO. So any uh questions that they may have, they have uh different ways of utilizing this to ensure uh that they know what they're doing. And then lastly, communication. Um, uh, the, the program that we're looking at run out is called SITE. And once again, that's gonna collect information. So that way, we can show real li- real-time data for you guys to understand where we're being deficient, which schools um are being performed at a high rate and which performs uh at an area of opportunity rate where we uh need to in- increase those. Uh, typically, I think the rate uh we look for is ninety percent and up. And uh, most of our schools right now, we're still entering that data. So we'll provide that once we have that data to show you guys. Now, the next slide is for site inspection. Now, as far as site inspections go, this is the program that we're talking about uh where all of our leaders will have access to it. And it's very quick, very simple. Uh, we can provide these site inspections to our uh FMD partners. And uh, we can send it via email. Uh, we also intend to give you guys access to um the site, so that way you guys have access to that. So from there, we inspect um, and we have a standard for each of the rooms. So once we inspect, uh, we uh take uh pictures to uh verify and confirm the status of the room. And then from there, we correct, uh, follow up with team members to correct deficiencies. Uh, we ma- email uh inspections to our team members. Uh, and once again, our inspectors can add photos to these um, uh, these inspections. Uh, and then of course, real-time um reporting of this information, communicating to our partners and our team and also our um, our custodians uh that are responsible for these areas. And then this will also give us an opportunity to retrain these individuals uh if, if these items continue to be habitual or um, uh, or consistently come up on either the FMD's side or on our side. And uh, this will give us the opportunity to retrain individuals as well, so. And then, aside from that, um.
Okay, and that concludes our presentations and we're ready for any questions.
Thank you so much, Ms. Karian and Mr. Roper and ABM. Thank you guys for being here. Thank you for giving us these presentations. Um, I will open it up for questions. I have two questions right off the bat first and then we will go to the board. Um. I had a question, um, and I'm trying to figure out how to phrase this. Uh, are you seeing, and, and this would be to you, Ms. Karian or Mr. Roper. Um, but are you seeing issues in some schools, not all? Um, there have been a couple that I have visited, so I've kinda witnessed this, but I don't know if it's something that's trickling down. Um, but issues between our day custodians and ABM, meaning, um, so you have day custodians doing the inspections for the night custodians. Um, but what I have experienced personally is that we're finding reports coming in that actually aren't problems. Um, and I don't know where that disconnect is happening or what is going on. Um, just for example, reports of dirty bathrooms and nurses' stations at one school, but I went literally the next day and that was not the case. And so I'm just trying to figure out um where that disconnect is um and what we could possibly do to solve that.
So yeah, I can answer that. So first of all, there was a, a little bit of an overlap between the day custodian and the ABM evening custodians. And so we've been able to rectify that. We spoke out with ABM and we said, I think that um, we should ha- limit that over, um, overlap. I think it was like forty minutes to an hour overlap. So that's been, that has changed um district-wide. So when our day custodians leave, um, then the ABM follows um after that. So there's no more overlap. Um, regarding the inspection, this is the reason why we have our coordinators verify our day custodians' inspections 'cause we did notice that there was a trend um of some of misinformation in the inspection form that our day custodians were um filling out, saying that um there was a certain area that needed um more, you know, work, that didn't meet standards. Our coordinators go out to the schools and verify that specific area and then they will confirm whether it need, it is valid or not. So um, that's why it's really important for our custodial coordinators to really go out and vet a lot of the daily inspections. So hopefully that answered your question.
Yeah, no, it absolutely did. Um, and just a follow-up to that though would be, so is there a clear, since you have um separated that overlap, is there now a clear differential between what the evening responsibilities are versus what the day responsibilities are? That way, you're not seeing like a blame game of day saying night didn't do it or night saying day didn't do it.
Yes, we are seeing a huge difference. We've also recently just had a day custodian meeting just to go over the uh job duties of our day custodians, so they are clear. Um, these are the job duties of our day custodians and they understand what the job duties of our evening custodians. So um, yes, we've, we've met with our day custodians to review that. And if we have to um continually do that, we're more than happy to do so.
Thank you, Ms. Karian. Ms. Maple, I saw your hand first.
Um, some of the more nuanced, you know, issues of in not having enough people, having to hire people on training, um, I totally understand all of those growing pains. One of the things, uh, Ms. Karian, that you mentioned is that one of the consistent things we're seeing in the reports is vacuuming and trash. And I'm just wondering if there's a solution in place for this very specific common recurrence to be addressed.
Shall I defer that to ABM?
So we have noticed this at some schools, uh, being a common theme. So uh, what we're currently working on right now is reconfiguring the runs. One of the main uh important things is we understand trash is being used every single day. So that's obviously the first thing that needs to be done. So uh, we're, it's a retraining opportunity for a lot of our um custodians. But uh mainly what we're doing is try, uh, currently in this month, we're reconfiguring a lot of the routes and trying to solve a lot of the issues that are occurring, especially with the uh daily vacuuming. So uh, we do have an AB schedule that um, that we're working on and making sure that uh it's implemented throughout and that way we can get you guys on a consistent uh have consistency in terms of the cleaning.
Go ahead, Ms. Maple.
Um, Ms. Karen, you mentioned, and I, I, I think it's more of a comment, me asking for some confirmation. Um, you mentioned that the concern forms are a brand-new practice. Um, and I understand that the relevance and the importance of sharing that is that there's not, if I'm correct, that we don't have historical data to compare that to. Am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Dullian.
Uh, thank you so much and I appreciate the presentation tonight. And um, I will preface my comments by stating that my directness should not be, um, I hope it's not construed as being negative. Um, but I am gonna be very direct here because we're talking about three million dollars. And when we look at that, uh, when we look at the dollars that we saved, we have two parties right now. Uh, no vendor wants to lose a contract. I get that. I've been on that side of the table. Also, no union wants to lose dues-paying members. Okay, that's money. It's also about jobs and it's people, but let's be real, it's money. So when I receive, um, when I heard that our union, ESSA, had a form that has data on it about um things that are breaking down, you know, reports to them, of course, there's gonna be a skew there and I, and I know that because, again, we're talking about money and we're talking about bringing back jobs to dues-paying members to a union. I understand that. I also understand that when I go into schools and I talk to administrators and I talk with a lot, I also understand that when I go into schools and I talk to administrators and I talk with a lot, not just those that are active in the union, I do hear consistently that there's a breakdown in service. I also understand that when contractors come on, there is a growing pain process. So I understand that and I want to give grace to this. But what I'm frustrated with is if there's data from an ESA form, from the union form, and then there's also data from a district form that was presented tonight, was that data reconciled? And when was it decided that we're going to have one form? Because bottom line, my focus is about making sure that we, we made a tough decision to, this was a very tough decision to make, so that we didn't have to close more schools. If we have to reverse this decision, that's going to be a very substantial cost that we could potentially put into music, we could potentially put into lowering class sizes. So I want to get it fixed. I want to make sure that our, that our, that our, that our schools are clean. I never once said during this process that the service would be better. The only guarantee was that we are going to save money. And we are saving money. So thank you. So I just want to, I want to get to the data here as to what's actually happening. To Ms. Burnett's point, we're receiving two very different stories and it's incredibly frustrating for, as a board member perspective, because the two parties that we're hearing from both have vested interests in either bringing the contract back to get dues paying members to help pay for representation in that union or for a vendor to maintain a contract. So I'm really looking to the district and saying, what's going on? What's happening at Lathrop Weller, North Pole High, Ticasak Brown? What's hap, what are we doing to make sure that the baseline, that we are keeping our schools clean for students, for staff, for educators? What can we do to reconcile the data issues? And, and I don't want to be in a position where we potentially have to take very hard fought money, which we just fought for, an increase to the BSA and put it back into something where I'd really want to invest it into lowering class sizes or bringing back music teachers. So that's my very long winded general question to administration.
Can I take that?
Go ahead, Dr. Minor.
Yeah, I'd be happy to speak to that. And I don't think that there's data issues at play here. And so as Ms. Karian explained, ESA had a form initially, they wanted to ensure that their unions had an outlet to communicate their concerns. The district also had a form and through great collaboration with ESA, we said, hey, we all want the very best for our students and having multiple forms doesn't streamline communication and ensure that when there's problems, that problems can be addressed efficiently and quickly. And so, you know, Ms. Johnson has been great to work with in terms of going to our form. We've given her access so she can see the exact data that's available. And as Ms. Karian showed, yes, there have been spikes at certain areas. We know that there's challenges in certain buildings, but if you actually look at the numbers, there's not overwhelming tickets being put in at each individual school. And so we're aware of certain areas and where there's performance improvements. I appreciate ABM coming up. Last week, we had a great walkthrough of multiple buildings together to point out some of the concerns that were there and to hear, you know, improvements that can be made, transitional improvements, improvements on their side, but then also them being really honest. One of the challenges that we faced in this transition process was a hang up in getting people through the HR processes on both sides. So getting our HR departments together to ensure that background checks are going through as efficiently as process. So their pipeline's not held up by our processes. So I think we're there in terms of, you know, data integration and ensuring people understand if they have concerns, where to direct those concerns. Ms. Karian sent out an email here recently to all staff to reiterate, this is the process that you go through. If there's something within your school that you need addressed, please use this so we can get it addressed as quickly as possible. And then I can't reiterate enough, like this is a new process. We never had a form out there or invited people to say, hey, please fill out this form if you've had issues. I'd always worked through the building principal in the past. And so there really isn't comparable data other than it establishing a baseline of what we have right now and going forward. And we know we're not at the level that we want to be. I think we're all recognizing that. But, you know, I think we are going to get to that level that we want and it's certainly the savings that we're seeing go to things that we want to see in investments in the classroom. And so I think that's really important to acknowledge.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. Thank you for doing the walkthrough. That answered a couple of my questions and I think that's important to know that, that we actually have eyes in the buildings and, and that we're going to look at the facilities. So I just have a couple of, well, I have one question about, about recruiting efforts. I'm curious to know how many we still need, like how, how many vacancies do we still have to fill at this point? I have a couple of questions if that's okay.
One microphone to rule the world.
So currently, if, if everybody showed up for work every night, we would be appropriately staffed. However, we have had a pretty high rate of, you know, instant rate of absences. And so our anticipation is to bring on about another nine or 10 people to make sure that we have ample ability to cover those absences and have real substitutes in the building. And also so custodians can feel comfortable actually calling in sick. We don't want them to come to work when they're sick, but that number, we know we need another nine or 10 people to make that happen. If everybody showed up at work, we'd be okay right now, but the real world is we need another nine or 10.
Okay, thank you. That's an interesting perspective that I think we need to hear that if everybody was there, you'd be good. And I think that's important. I'm, you know, I'm a business owner, so I totally understand that.
Yeah. And admittedly, it did catch us probably off guard a little bit with the absenteeism rate. And I think there's, you know, there's probably things going around that don't always go around right now with, you know, with illness, but, but we are adapting to that and we'll, we will overcome it for sure.
Okay. And thank you for making sure that we have enough so that we can address those things. Appreciate that. The other comment that I wanted to, or question maybe, is Ms. Karian, you said that, well, your graph shows that you have 42 responses. And so I'm assuming that that is from, it's on page 15. That would be from the beginning of the year through September 30th. So roughly a month and a half, maybe something like that. Okay. And then we have, you said, I think you said 30 more so far this month, which is only three weeks. We don't have even four weeks and it seems like more. But do you see that, that, that the trend is increasing to have more complaints and more concerns being turned in?
I feel like we're seeing the same trend. I think what was happening before is that there was another form out there. And I believe the union form received about 17 complaints. So if you, if you calculate that with ours, that's an average about 57. So we're seeing about the same trend. We're receiving probably two, two to three complaints a day or roughly. So today we had a, have an increase. So it changes daily depending on, you know, if staff shows up to the building. So in the past, when we had, you know, shortage, we had a game plan of, okay, here are the essential areas that you need to make sure that you take out the trash, that you do the restroom, and then you, you know, spot vacuum. So we've, we've discussed with ABM what our methods were. And so they're moving forward to try to implement something similar in that. And then also having rovers cover those. So it's hard to tell, it's hard for me to give you a, a data point right now because we haven't really calculated that. But if that's something that you need, then I could definitely look into it.
Follow up, Mrs. Burnett. Go ahead, Ms. Carol Hubbard.
So then, yes, I would love to invite you to please follow up with us at the end of October. The, I mean, I know that's coming up soon, but I mean, could we get a synopsis from the end of October and then even the end of November? Just to kind of watch this and hopefully, I mean, our, our hope is we love our schools and we want everybody to be happy there and for people to feel comfortable coming in and, you know, we don't have dirty bathroom issues or carpet issue, whatever it is, it doesn't matter. We want them to be focused on school. And so if, if we can watch this trend decrease, that would put our minds at ease. And I think that, you know, once we sort of get over this hurdle, I think, I mean, my hope is that the, the trend just continues to go down and then this is a non-issue.
Dr. Minor.
Yeah, thank you for recognizing this. So data is interesting, right? I don't know that I would necessarily say I'd want that data to go down in terms of the people filling out the form or letting us know that there's concerns. And so want to be clear that the numbers might very well rise, but that might be that there's more awareness of the form and that, you know, that there, there wants to be high cleanliness levels within their school. And so we all want schools to be more clean. We want the, our schools to have welcoming environments, but just looking at a number on a spreadsheet doesn't necessarily tell the entire story at the school. And so I guess my promise to the board and the community is that we'll continually keep you updated as to the progress. ABM's been a great partner and has said that they'll come in and continue to provide updates to the board in terms of what we're working on. But I want to caution the board in terms of raw data numbers, it doesn't always tell the story. We want to encourage people to fill out the forms if there's issues so that those issues can be rectified within their schools and our classrooms.
And then can I just add one more? We have also received positive comments on the custodian concern form. So it's not just complaints about issues not being completed. We've also received positive issues as well.
We like positive issues. Mr. Dorn.
First, I want to say thank you very much to FMD and to ABM for coming up here to meet with us, for coming up earlier and spending several days here. The lens that I'm looking at is savings is gone. We're not talking about savings. We're talking about $4 million in expenditure. So that's what I'm looking at. And so, because the question was just recently asked, but I, but I will tell you upfront, I'm disappointed in what I've seen so far. But maybe you can turn that around as I ask some questions here. You've mentioned the, and this is to ABM right now because most recent question there. The question was, how many people do you have on the job? And so that's my question first.
We currently have 56 hourly employees.
And follow up to that, you made the statement, referenced the number that we need. How many do you need to do the job?
Well, right now we do have what we need to do the job, but we do have a few people on LOAs and we also have consistent callouts. So we're increasing that number.
Okay. So I just want to make the observation then, 56 replaced 75. So many people we laid, positions we laid off. So.
We're looking at 65. As Dean mentioned, we're looking for about nine, nine more individuals.
Right, as well as your substitutes.
Right.
So 56 positions, full-time positions versus 75. So am I correct on the 56 number?
Correct.
Thank you. Okay. To Ms. Karian. Question, one of the feedbacks was from principals would be giving regular reports. That has not been mentioned at all. And so I'm interested in what actual principal reports are going through, through FMD to ABM to address concerns.
So I did recently have a meeting with all the principals and I didn't really hear any concerns from them. I did hear some positive. I mean, there are some areas that are, are in need of more improvement. But in terms of a report, I haven't really received any direct report from principals. I did go out and visit the schools and then I had several principals actually personally tell me that their ABM custodian is doing great at their site. So we haven't done a, a client survey or a principal survey if that's what you're looking for.
Okay. But wasn't that part of the original plan? That they would give you regularly?
Yes. And so we are, so we are planning to do that by the end of semester one. I mean, we can certainly look at doing something soon.
Okay, not every month, as was in the original plan.
I'll get back to you on that. No, I mean.
Can I ask one more and then put me back on the queue?
One more, Mr. Dorn.
Okay, going to slide four, transition. I'm very interested. What's the transition period? How long is that? Expected to be. And I'll tell you what my concern is. We're four months in to a 12-month contract. We're a third of the time in and we're still transitioning.
No, and, and you're right, Mr. Dorn. The, the typical transition is a 90 to 180, 90 to 120 digs, excuse me, implementation. And then that includes full implementation of training, equipment, staging, quality control, and quality feedback too. And so, and you are right, we do have a, what we call our principal report card, which is a regular survey report coming back from the principals that will be part, you know, with the permission of, with the appropriate permission, that will be part of the implementation. And within 120 days, we will have that, we'll have that implemented again, you know, with, with that authorization. But it is, I mean, that is true. I mean, traditionally, these agreements are, you know, five-year agreements. And so as a matter of ratio, you know, that it's a smaller part, but you're right, it's a big part of a one-year agreement. That that's a lot of investment that we're making too, you know, to make sure that we've got a thorough rollout for you and providing that service and that commitment that we've made.
And thank you for giving the update on the principal report. And I'm assuming that the transition period doesn't start until you start on the job. Whereas the contract was earlier and you knew that, had the contract ready to go. And I'm, I'm just listening to the presentation in the spring when the decision was made and the conversation that was from the fall on that July 1, from my perspective, you weren't ready to do the job. So the transition did not start if we're talking about another couple of months before we're even there.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
Yep, understood, understood. And it is, I mean, and you're right. It is certainly the initial service pieces have been ready, you know, and rolled out as of July 1. And though, you know, in, in providing a service and really having that excellence that we all want and are going to be, you know, and are striving for, and we will provide, it does take a longer rollout to get those pieces in place. And, you know, 120 days is really our anticipated timeline for a full implementation of that rollout.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. I'd also like to mention that when this was implemented, I know that we had some schools that firefighters were occupying and things that were going on that did not allow ABM to get into the schools when the contract started. Is that correct, Dr. Minor?
That is correct.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Burgess, we have you up next.
Thank you. So backing us up to some of the discussion that was being had around the forms, the custodian concern form. I'm, I'm, I guess one concern that I have I, I'm, I'm, I guess one concern that I have is that our staff, our, our teachers and support staff, other folks in schools, they, they have a lot on their plates already. And so they may not have the time or the energy to actually go in and make the report. Or they might not feel that it's worth doing. So I guess, you know, I'm, I'm a bit concerned that concerns maybe could be under-reported. And I'm curious what kind of active outreach is taking place? And who is being included in that active outreach? We talked a little bit about principals, but I think it's also incredibly useful to hear directly from staff. I would say kitchen managers, classroom teachers and, and support staff should, should all be included. Can you speak a little bit to the active outreach that they're doing to get feedback on, on satisfaction?
So this custodial concern form is open to all staff in the school district. So everyone, everyone has access to this custodial concern form. So one of the active things that we're doing is our day custodian. So our day custodian really is the main point of contact in the school at, because they're the ones that are there in the mornings. And then when a teacher goes into the classroom, if they don't want to fill out this custodial concern form, then our day custodian takes note of that in our site inspection form. So that's another way of collecting information from our staff. So I feel like we are taking measures, you know, there, I did hear that there was some folks that were not comfortable filling out the custodial form. So we do have our day custodian making sure that they're reaching out to their staff in the building, ensuring that, you know, tasks are being completed and that they can actually put their concerns into, to the day custodian who then put that, puts that report into our site inspection. And that gets passed along to the custodial manager.
Okay, thank you, follow up.
Dr. Minor.
Can I just follow up on that as well? Just wanted to mention that also Jay and her team proactively are in buildings every day throughout the district. Myself, the assistant superintendents, many of the district level staff are out in buildings every day, talking to staff, talking to principals. Mr. Dorn, to your point, I meet regularly with FPA. I had breakfast with them last week. This topic was on the table in terms of how is it going? And I think it's similar to years past and that depending on the staffing that's in buildings. Some schools are absolutely great. Some schools have said, you know, we've never seen it better than other schools are really struggling depending on the staffing. And ABM is experiencing some of the same challenges we experienced in the past in terms of high call-out rates and how they're going to work through that. And so I just wanted Mr. Burgess to know that we are soliciting feedback from teachers and principals and staff members as we go out. And as you see me and my staff members in buildings, we're happy to talk about ABM and their performance and anything else that might come up. And this is something that as I meet with principals, as I go out to schools on a weekly basis, I touch base with them on. We know it's an important service and it is in a transitional period. And so we want to make sure if there's issues that we're rectifying those as quickly as possible.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Mr. Burgess, did you want to continue following up?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
So harkening back to something that was said earlier, you know, the raw data doesn't tell the whole story. So I'm curious, and I, and I want to say, you know, I'm really appreciative that ESA has access to the, the forms. I'm curious if board members could also get access so that we can see more than the numbers and actually see what complaints are being made. Would that be something that's feasible?
In terms of roles, I feel like that's really the board stepping over administration's role in terms of the day-to-day operations. I'm happy to continue to give the board some updates in terms of themes that we're seeing. But in terms of live data and seeing word for word, I do think that that's, should be a separation between board and administration.
Fair, thank you. One more follow-up?
Go ahead, Mr. Burgess.
So with the day custodian inspection sheets, I guess kind of along the same lines, can we get a summary of those reports? The number of deficiencies being reported in what areas and so forth? Would that be something that could be brought to the board so we can get more detail?
If that's a question directly to me, I think I could work with the board president on, and our administration in terms of data that can be shared with the board on a regular basis. I want to make sure that we're aligning with what the board needs are and what the entire board would like to see. And so let me follow up with some additional conversations in terms of what's needed. We'll start providing reports to the board or continued reports to the board on this topic. And if there's things that you're not seeing in those reports, then we can certainly add to them in the future.
Thank you.
Okay, put you back in the queue. All right, we are going to go now to, actually before we go to Ms. Julian, I wanted to throw myself in, I apologize. I wanted to ask, just for clarification purposes, maybe this is to you, Ms. Carrieon, or maybe this is to Dr. Minor. Are these complaints more numerous than in the past? Like, like have we had complaints on custodial services in our schools? Like the same amount before ABM took over?
I'll take it and then I would be curious to hear Jay's thoughts too. So from a principal perspective, I don't think that they're more numerous. As I mentioned earlier, there's some schools that there's little to no issues. And then there's other schools where maybe there's some significant issues that we're working through. And a lot of that is based on the staffing levels currently at the school and the people that we have. You know, we were working, we were walking through Ryan the other day and a staff member pulled me aside. And this is a staff member that sometimes can be very critical and said, I've never seen our school cleaner. Thank you for moving in this direction. I was at another school that same day and multiple staff members pulled me inside and said, hey, there's some real challenges here. There's some struggles. And so I don't think that it's necessarily any more or less. We know that there's challenges in some buildings and I think our administration and ABM are partnering together to try to rectify those as quickly as possible.
Thank you. And then one more for me. I'm just hearing a lot of this person's got to talk to this person, got to talk to this person, got to talk to this person, got to check back with this person. Is there a way to possibly streamline that to maybe make things easier for our principals to get directly in contact with Mr. Oper or with you? I, I don't know how that, I just, it seems like there's a lot of pieces and people involved. And just seems like maybe we could streamline that a little better.
So yeah, principals are, are more than welcome to reach out directly to me through phone calls or emails. And yeah, I will, I take their, their complaints or concerns and then I direct them to ABM. So it doesn't necessarily have to be that, you know, all the different steps. They can just reach out right to me.
Okay, thank you.
And, and quite a few of them do.
Perfect, thank you so much.
Move to suspend the rules to extend our meeting until our business is finished.
Second.
Rules have been suspended. Ms. Julian, we will go to you.
Thank you. I would like to just also support Mr. Dorn's request to proactively reach out to principals. And I, and I want to just refer back to the administration's, so Ms. Carrieon, your, your slide deck on page 16 of the slides. Yep, 16 is the key performance indicators. So I, I want to commend you because I feel like that positive, that proactive outreach is going to come from the customer surveys, which is, you know, I'm assuming going to the educators, the administrators, the people that are in the buildings. So thank you for taking that step forward. And, and thank you for actively outreaching to our, to our principals. I think that that's a critical thing. Also, I just want a point of clarification. So we had, and this was one of the decision-making factors that I used last December. But that was our vacancy rate for custodial was quite high, as I remember. It was close to, if I'm correct in this, and so this is why I'm asking for clarification, I believe it was close to 24% at the beginning of every year, with an average around 14%, which is although we had 70 shift custodian positions, the amount that was actually filled was closer to 60 on an ongoing basis. And so recruitment and retention is not unique to this position. We've seen it in, we, we actually have spoken about it with our sped paraprofessionals. This one in particular, though, the day custodian rate for vacancies, which was, is much lower historically. And so I, I want to talk a little bit about the vacancy rate right now with day custodians. If we, if we have one, what is that, none? It's zero, perfect. Okay, so for the job that was being done last year when we had it in-house, it was being done by a workforce of around 60, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, roughly 60.
Okay, okay. And so ABM, if I can summarize here, has the target of 56 hourly employees. Is it true that one key difference of this contract from what we were operating before with our ESA contract and now what we're operating with ABM is we have more flexibility to potentially move custodians around at night to different facilities as, as needed? I, I, my understanding was that with, when we had it through ESA, we could not move custodians around. So for example, I know that there were certain facilities that did not have night custodians for a substantial amount of time last year. So can we talk a little bit about how that has changed and what's the different approach from last year and this year?
Yes, that's correct. We can move our custodians or assign them to different schools as needed. You know, we're trying to avoid doing that as much as possible, but we do have certain rover positions that allow us to do coverage for callouts, things such of that nature. I know that I mentioned the number 56 as Mr. Dorn requested. We are currently in the process of reconfiguring routes and finding a true number. Once again, we understand that 56, you are correct, as that was the original number. But we are currently reconfiguring and seeing if there's more need. And we are absolutely committed to adding more people on after a reconfiguration, if that's what is required, so.
Follow up, Ms. Julian?
Just a quick add to the, the numbers conversation. So I do want to point out that we closed three schools last year. So the comparative of 70 custodians that we had last year is not necessarily comparable to this year. And so when you look at the number that ABM is trying to get to you, it actually is quite comparative to what we would have had last year. So just wanted to put that on the table so the board recognizes that difference with the three school closures.
Thank you, Dr. Minor. Ms. Julian?
Okay, thank you. That is very helpful as a reminder that our footprint has changed. If there's anything that I can, that I can add here, it, it is going to be, it's, it's tough to suss this out because again, money's involved. And when money's involved, everybody wants a piece. I, I'm pleased with the administration's, and again, this slide here, the KPIs. I just want to say that I feel like this is the very, this, this is the important step for us to be able to kind of in a third-party way audit the situation moving forward. I also want to thank ABM for, for investing. I, I did have a question about the employees in, in, you know, the, the ABM employees that have been hired. Have they organized under another union locally or are they unrepresented?
They are unrepresented.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Mr. Dorn.
Thank you. One of the things I want to note, and I'm glad, Ms. Carrieon, that you mentioned you've gotten positives as I've gone around schools. I've heard positives for both ABM and FMD. I've heard principals and teachers talk about the responsiveness of FMD and the coordinators, the oversight coordinators, that when they've called and they've said trash wasn't picked up by the night and, or other issues that FMD has been very responsive. I've heard stories of people really saying their ABM night custodian is great. There are not enough of them, too many openings. So if you're staffed for 56, I am glad to hear that you're actively trying to get subs in line, that you are really willing to look at what is needed because that was the original push to say that. So I appreciate getting that information and I will really look for those actual steps to be taken. Because we are, the, the consistent thing is shortage. And that's one of the contributing factors in saying, not just saving money, but we're struggling. But you're a professional company and the assurance is where you can do it. My concern is, as I've walked into schools and I walk down hallways not having been mopped, walking into areas of a school and finding trash that should have been cleared, not, and I, I, this was scattered trash. Wasn't picked up, wasn't even put in a bag. When I've gone into classrooms and I'm, I've been keeping my eyes open and I'll tell you, I've got a 30-year principal eye. So when I go in and kind of looking, what's the classroom look like? Oh, the desks look okay. And then passing comment, I find out the teacher cleaned them, came in early to do that. Or librarian had to clean their own desks. They look good, but it's not being done, the job. And so I'm mindful and it's my question of, we looked at a lot of standards in the contract that were there. When I look on slide 12, I see a change in the elementary deal. That instead of vacuuming and mopping that floor every day, it's every other day. And I think we got an email recently that was for staff, letting them know these wouldn't be done every day. So we're not, we're lowering this, my question is, we're lowering the standards, what are we going to do about it?
Thank you for bringing that up, Mr. Dorn. So last year, we were doing every other day. And so this is the same standard that we've asked ABM to do, but we are working and we're, we're recognizing that there's been a high volume of concerns regarding the vacuuming. And we're working with our partners to see what we can do to rectify that.
Follow up.
Follow up, Mr. Dorn.
So when the standards were presented, we were recognizing we were not able to fill all of our positions on a regular basis. But the pitch was the standards, we would get better standard, we would get a better meeting of those standards. I'm looking in terms of we're contracting, we're going to use professionals. How do we get those standards that were in the contract? We're lowering them, it's not a change order, it's a de-change.
Yeah, we're working with ABM through that process to try to increase the standards.
Okay, so that'll come up, we're, because they should be done every day. We recognized that before, it's in the contract, so.
Dr. Minor?
Uh, Mr. Dorn, it actually is in the contract that it's done every day and that hasn't changed from when it was presented to the board. And so when it was presented to the board, the board got a detailed scoping of what would be done and that hasn't changed. It also didn't change from last year in terms of what we expected our custodians to do. Now we are recognizing that some people would like it, that their classrooms vacuumed every day. And so we're looking at options to potentially offset other places in the contract to make that happen so that there's not an increase in cost in the contract. And we're in that process right now and haven't identified a solution, but are looking into that.
Thank you for that explanation. And I won't continue an argument on it, a discussion, but even in the presentation of the checkoff list, it reflects that it's been changed. But even in the presentation of the checkoff list, it reflects that it's been changed. So on, on slide twelve, so that's why my question came forward. Can I ask one more?
One more question, Mr. Doran, then we're going to move on.
Clarification, Ms. Karyon, you had indicated that, and it might have been, I, I didn't catch it right. But what I, that's why I want to clarify. I thought you indicated that the day custodians are, you're having training and meetings with them because they were misinformed about what they should expect from the night custodians. Or I'm not sure I heard all of it, so.
So I don't, I don't believe it was misinformed. We did pass on the information. I think it's an understanding. Some of our day custodians were not clear on what their role was as a day custodian. So their understanding was that they don't require to clean at all. And so if a principal asked a day custodian, there's a mess in the bathroom, could you please go ahead and clean it up? Our day custodian, I won't say all, and I won't mention their names, but there was a certain number of custodians that would just lock the bathroom and say, no, that's ABM, that they do that at night. And so we just wanted to make sure, we clarified that they understood that their role is to support the school during the day. So if there's any messes or a request from a staff or the principal that they need to clean the bathrooms, that their role is to also clean the bathrooms during the day and not to leave it just for ABM at night. So we do have a responsibility during the day to ensure that we're restocking paper, towels, you know, toilet paper and, and, and those items as well as making sure that if there is a spill in a carpet that our day custodian, we're going to address that immediately rather than waiting for that night. So I think that's, that's really what we wanted to make sure that our custodians, our day custodians understood that they do also clean and make sure that they also take pride in making sure that this school is safe and sanitary.
Thank you for that clarification because I've watched and I've gotten a lot of feedback on the day custodians picking up from things that were not done at night and covering a lot of bases there. So a lot of positives for them.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir. We, we also explained to them that, you know, we, our expectation of them is the common areas during the daytime. Like, we don't expect them to go into a, a classroom and clean a classroom that wasn't clean. But if the principal were to ask them to, we, we encourage them to and then to let us know so that way we can report that as well. Like, this room wasn't done or something in this room wasn't done and our people actually took care of it. This took time out of their, their day. So we, we went over this on Friday with them.
Thank you. Put me back in the queue.
We are actually going to take these last two questions from board members. And then we are going to move on as we still have a whole presentation on assessments coming up. And it is getting late. So, Mr. Doran, if you have further questions, please email them to Dr. Minert and we can get them answered by Ms. Karyon or Mr. Roper. We've got Bobby, or, sorry, Mr. Burgess, and then Ms. Dullian. And then we're going to move on to our assessment update. Mr. Burgess, go ahead.
Thanks. And fortunately, Mr. Doran covered a couple of the questions. But I did, and, and other through conversation, I think these were kind of covered. But I did want to just ask for clarity. I think I heard Dr. Minert say earlier that the difference between the, the sites where we're getting positive feedback and where there might be some challenges is, is really a staffing issue. Is that, is that accurate? Is, is, I guess, what's the difference between those sites? And, and is it that those sites that are doing less well have more callouts or absences?
No, and that's a valid point. Certainly where we have a person that's not the regular custodian, I, I think that's, we are more likely to have those issues. And, and, and we have, and that's true. We certainly make every effort, though, to, like, if we do have a callout, and even if we're short-staffed that night, to still make sure that we provide the, the essential services, whether it be on overtime, you know, three rearranging or whatever be the case. But our business model really is to have the same custodian in each school, custodians on a nightly basis. And that's really where we, you know, where they can take that ownership. And when they are missing, even though there's somebody else there doing it, they, they're missed. It, it is never quite the same. And that has been a challenge for us.
Thanks. That actually answered my next question, which was, you know, do the same staff or the same teams return to the same schools consistently? And it sounds like that's the goal. So thank you.
It sure is. Yeah, ownership is really the key word there.
Okay, and I have, I have one more similar line about staff because I think early on I had heard that a, I'm forgetting the exact number, but a rather large percentage of our custodial staff who were lost were hired by ABM initially. And I'm wondering, are those folks still sticking with you?
Go ahead.
I hate to keep it short, but yes. Thank you.
Ms. Dullian?
Thank you. I'll make this quick. Another discrepancy in, in, in data that we've received, and this is not on the administration, but another thing that we talked about, and this was on a previous Agenda eighty point tonight. But when we were considering the charter school that was on the table, we heard from that school that their plan for custodial, that the, that the staff was going to be there and that the staff was going to pitch in. And these are the same staff that are working in our schools right now. And so I'm, I just don't understand why, I, I want a little bit more clarity on that because, because we, that was another thing that came forward when it comes to a facility and custodial. And we are, we need to look in the mirror always and say, what, what can we do? Not necessarily overextend a contract, but from any educator, but, and also hold our contractors accountable for what they say that they're going to do. But the spirit of collaboration, again, is something that I go, okay, it's, it's going to be here, but not as a whole. So can we talk about that a little?
Thank you for the question. And I'm not exactly sure what you're asking, but what I would like to say is that I appreciate our teachers who go above and beyond every day. And not just this year, but in years past, educators do what they need to do for their students and their classrooms. And so whether it's this year or years past, if their room didn't get vacuumed, teachers oftentimes vacuum their rooms. If the trash was missed or if surfaces weren't wiped down, teachers do it on a regular basis. Do we want teachers to do that? Absolutely not. Teachers have enough on their plates. We're looking at every ways to take things off of their plates and not overburden them. But I want to say, teachers are givers and they're going to make sure their environments are clean for their students. And what we're trying to do with our partnership with ABM and the work with FMD is ensure that teachers don't have to do that work in their classrooms. And so I'm glad that the board is asking some pretty tough questions this evening and getting at a point that we really do want service levels at a place where it's not even a thought. Teachers walk into their classroom and they can be ready to instruct students and work with them on a daily basis and not have to worry about, was the trash taken out? Or do I have to vacuum my own floors?
Thank you, Dr. Minert. Mr. Doran, you can ask your one last question and then we're going to move on.
Thank you. So my question is actually through the chair to the administration or through the administration to ABM. And I think at ABM, you've heard a lot of concerns. For me, for sure, the key highlights is extremely positive, but there's a disconnect. And yes, some schools may be working, many schools are not. I would like to request, and again, it's to the board, without getting into the management administration, I think that's you, Dr. Minert, you gave a good caution on that. But I think we should, I, I would certainly like to see from ABM a real proactive plan to eliminate the shortages. You're a professional company. This is your business. To address the concerns that have come up from various board members and actually get a plan that you have, give you, I don't want it tonight because I think you need to be thinking about it. But, and I know you're already doing that, you know, when you were addressed, oh, maybe we have to have more than fifty-six. The commitment was to, was never a number. The commitment was to do the job. There's real concerns about that and I'd really appreciate a plan. So again, if it's something that the board would like, I don't want it, it's not an individual. But I think it would address a lot of board concerns that have come up. And you've shed some light on some things, but a lot of it is, what's the plan going forward? When you say, we will give them access, we will have this, our intent is, okay, what is that actual plan going forward?
Thank you, Mr. Doran.
Yes, Mr. Doran, we can make that commitment to, to get that plan. And, and we'd certainly need to be making those plans and make sure we have them in place anyway. And, and you have a commitment that we will share that with you and be transparent.
All right. Thank you guys so much. Thank you, ABM, for being here tonight and for presenting to the board and, and taking the onslaught. Much appreciated. Thank you, Ms. Karyon and Mr. Roper for being here as well and taking the onslaught. We hope you guys have a great evening and safe travels to those of you who are traveling. Moving on, we will move into our final item on the agenda for tonight, and that is our assessment update. Executive Director of Teaching Learning, Chain Beam, along with Tara Devon, Secondary Curriculum Coordinator, will provide a presentation on assessment data. Good evening, Mr. Beam and Ms. Devon.
Good evening. If you could give me thirty seconds to make sure we are up and running here, I appreciate it. I am here tonight with Ms. Devon, who is our secondary coordinator. And she's going to be doing half of this presentation with me. And I'm super excited to have her with me here. Okay, hold on. I got a new computer, so I'm working my way through this. No, no one needs to see my, my desktop. That is not, that's, yes, nobody needs to see that. All right, you should see, like, inside my brain, like you can just imagine. So, so thank you for the time. We appreciate it. The work, or the, the, the work that we're doing tonight aligns very much with our new strategic plan. In this case, specifically about growth. We can see here that we believe learning is an ongoing journey and support the continuous development of our students and staff and celebrate their successes along the way, which is what we're doing here. And we're very happy to be looking at this data. Additionally, it aligns with the pillars, specifically pillar one, about educational excellence, and the one, the little bullet points with the stars, students meet academic goals, which we'll talk about tonight. And then student growth is celebrated across schools and, and the district. We'll see tonight, we'll have some things to, to celebrate. We'll also see tonight that there'll be some things that we want to work on. And then pillar four, investing in, in our people, professional learning for a staff that is engaging and meaningful. I would say the things that we want to celebrate tonight, there is a direct relation with the professional development that we've been able to have for our teachers and the good work that they've done that matches up with the achievement that our kids have, have had. We'll talk more about that. This is a visual that we put out every year. Board members have seen this before. This basically shows what, what tests we give, we give throughout the year. We give lots of different assessments to lots of different grade levels and they, for lots of, of different reasons. We won't be looking at all of these tonight, but I just wanted to kind of put it out there that you can see, we do give lots of assessments for lots of different causes. Some because the state says we're going to do this thing and some because it gives us really good data back so teachers can do something with that data and work with their students. This visual is our year-long literacy roadmap. We created this probably three years ago. And every year, we tweak it and make it better and stronger. And the purpose of this specific document that I want you all to see is that all of you know that literacy has been our focus of ours for the last three years. We've hit it really hard. One of the concerns that Ms. LaPlante and I have talked about is this doesn't need to be a focus anymore. It needs to be simply how we do business. And part of the worry is, one day when she is gone, one day when I am gone, one, one day when Ms. Devon is gone, does this just go away? And we don't want that. Too many things are driven by people and not driven by the district as a whole. So this is one of the documents that help us make this something that when we're all gone, this document will live on and the teachers and the principals and the people who are sitting in these chairs when we're not can refer back to it and say, okay, here's just how we do it. And it's not even a question of, do we give the assessment? Do we have rep plans? Do we have after-school tutoring? Do we have all these things? We just do because that's what Fairbanks does. So this is a really nice document that helps guide us. And every one of those blue little links is a link that takes them to another document. We send this out to the principals and to the teachers. And it really helps them know what's coming next every single month. So we're really proud about that. Tonight's presentation is a little different than the presentations that you've seen us do previously. Part of that reasoning is because we're showing you more data. In the past, we showed you M-class and MAP reading only because that's what we're working on as a focus. What we've, well, what we've known, but what we're, what, what we're ready to do now is to have literacy be the thing we do, but we have to start talking about math. And when we look at the data tonight, that will be the case. If I were writing an essay, my thesis statement tonight on this would be, we have some really good data with, with reading and we're very happy, comma, we have work to do in math. And we'll see the data on that tonight. Most of the time, we're going to be talking about M-class, MAP, AK-Star. M-class and MAP are given three times a year. M-class is given kindergarten through third grade in reading. MAP is given third grade, uh, uh, third grade through ninth grade three times a year, reading and math. And AK-Star is the big test at the end of the year, given by the state. It's only given, only given at the, at the end, uh, end of the year, and that's reading and math. So that's most of the data that we'll be looking at. We have one slide otherwise. Here is that one slide otherwise. While M-class helps us look at data for K-two in reading, I-ready is a different assessment and that shows us the data that we want to look at for math. One, there's a couple of ways to look at this. So I want to point out, this is kindergarten here, first grade here, second grade here. And then for each one of them, the years, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five. What we can look at basically is, things are kind of stagnant in math. That's what it kind of looks like here. A couple of things that you can note is that we're a little better if we go from year to year. So you can see kindergarten here is forty-four percent. The kids are in this, this dark green, which is middle or above grade level. There's forty-five percent the following year and last year, forty-seven percent. That's nice. First grade, twenty-eight percent, thirty percent, twenty-eight percent, pretty stagnant. Second grade, a little bit of growth, which is nice. Another way to look at it that we have to pay attention to is, what if you follow the same group of kids? So what that means is, these kindergartners, it used to be in twenty-two, twenty-three, forty-four percent of them were in this dark, deep green, which is what we want. Then the following year, these kids are here in first grade. That went down to thirty and then those kids went down to twenty-one. So what's happening is, we're not getting that same traction in math as we have in reading. Now, some good news. For M-class, which is about reading, this slide is from last year, the beginning of the year to the end of the year. the beginning of the year to the end of the year, K3. End, beginning of year and to the, to the end of the year. So one group of kids from September to May, basically. We can see here that the, and this is where we're going to start looking at dividing lines. And while M-class and MAP and AK-Star all look different, and you'll see that, that the slides look different, you'll see dividing lines and the color scheme is kind of the same, even though the shades are different, but the, but the color scheme is the same. So what we want to see here is, the difference here, if we can combine the green and the blue, because that's what we're always looking for, what's the green and the blue? At the beginning of the year, last year, we had 46% of our kids in K3 were in the green and the blue. By the end of the year, that went up to 60%. That's a nice jump. That's 14%. That's, 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 that's good for us. That's nice. And the number of kids who were in that well below went from 36% down to 25. That's good work for us. That's good work for the teachers. They have done a nice job in that area. So we're super happy about that. Then when you extrapolate that out and divide it by grade level, we can see some more detailed look. So for example, here, and there are those dividing lines. Look at what we do in kindergarten. This is, this is kind of stunning. At the beginning of the year, because kindergartners, are kindergartners and some are coming to the school, honestly, who kind of know how to read already. But a bunch come in and they don't know which way to hold the book. So when you ask them to start, they start learning letters and sounds and things like that, they have a lot of the growth to make and they do. So look at this, at the beginning of the year, last year, our kindergartners, only 24% of them came in really knowing what they need to know for kindergarten. But look at this, by the end of the year, it went from 24% to 69%. That's a stunning jump. Our kindergarten teachers, first off, that's an insanely difficult job. Like just say, hey, just come stand in line for a little while. Like that alone, getting them to stand in line is really hard to do. And we're teaching five-year-old humans how to recognize symbols and put sounds to them. It's, it's, it's amazing that anyone learns how to read. So that's really, really nice work. Then when you look at first grade, you can see that also. We went from 48% of our first graders, beginning of the year, end of the year, 67%. Second graders, 52% to 62%. Those are nice jumps. And I want us to remember, I want to remind you that third grade, M-class, that's weird funky data. Because what happens is by, because the state uses, the state tells us to use M-class to start conversations about holding kids back in third grade. So what happens is, we tell our schools, once your kids, once your third graders pass M-class, stop giving it to them. Don't give it to them again, because if they backslide in the spring, we got to start talking about holding them back. And that's not what, what we want to do. So once they pass it the first time, they stop taking it. If you'll notice, the numbers here in the bottom right-hand corner, see how many kids took it at the beginning of the year and how many kids took it at the end of the year? So what that means is, 521 kids already passed it and they're not even in that data at the end. So don't look at that third grade data and think, oh my gosh, that's, that's, you know, what's, what's wrong? There's, there's nothing wrong with it. It's just the M-class is weird funky data. And keep in mind that we can add 521 kids to the, to that number of, of, of the kids who have already passed it. So that's really, really nice for us. This is M-class, end of year, last year versus end of year, the year before. So the growth within a year can be great and should be great. I mean, it should be a, a large number. But when you compare the growth from year to year, that's like, that's really hard to make any kind of growth. So Dr. Minor set for us a goal of 2% growth. We actually, you can see here, that is what we're hit. That, that's exactly what we hit. So you can see end of year and 23, 24. And you add those numbers together and then you go end of year of 24, 25. And you see that's exactly 2%. If we can make 2% growth every year for the next three years, that'd be amazing. And in a few minutes, I'm going to show you some real numbers. Like what does it mean for 2% or 3% or 6% growth? We're going to look at, at some real numbers and real kids, which is, when I, when I put it together, I thought, man, this is really eye-opening. So 2% growth, we're very happy with that. Now this is that same idea, end of year, 23, 24, compared to end of year, 24, 25, except it's we, again, split it out by grade level. And you can see where the growth is there. And this is where I want to refer back to those dividing lines. And we can see that here, that dividing line, we see more green and blue here, more green and blue here, more green and blue here. And then, don't worry about the third grade, because that's the weirdness of M-class. So we're very happy with reading in K1, 2, and 3. I'm going to pass it over to Ms. Devon.
Okay, I'm going to talk to you about MAP data and actually jumping into math first. So we'll do math and reading over these slides. And, and you'll notice one stark difference between M-class and, and MAP data is there's five levels in MAP versus just the four levels in M-class, right? But that focus still is on that green and blue, like that's what we're looking for. So just those color coding to see that that's at the, you know, 61st percentile or greater, what we're looking at. So this is that beginning of year for last school year, 24, 25 to end of year. So just looking at where do kids start the year in third through fifth grade? And where did they end the year in, for third through fifth grade? And again, we're looking for that. Do we see a, a, an increase in the, the blue and the green, right? And hopefully then that correlates to a decrease in the red and the orange. So you can see actually, like for third, fourth, and fifth grade, right? The elementary level, we do see an increase from, from beginning of year to end of year in each of those grade levels. Remembering too, that the end-of-year MAP test is given within the AK-Star. So just keeping that in mind too, right? Like it is, as they take the AK-Star assessment, the MAP questions are embedded. And then they break, they break that score apart for us. So just kind of keeping that in mind at that end-of-year piece, like they're taking that last MAP as they're taking their state assessment. But we do see the trends that we want, right? Three through five, it just would be nice if those percentages were all higher than they are. There was less red and orange. Then we move into, what does that look like secondary, right? So same, beginning of year to end of year for six through nine. And, and we don't see the same trends here on the increase, right? So at that secondary level, there's definitely some work to be done on the math side, right? You know, sixth grade, you maybe, you know, you could think about transition to middle school and how is that, you know, affecting pieces? I would say for, for ninth grade, the tricky part with, with ninth grade, although we're trying to assess all ninth graders, but in math, right, our ninth graders are, some kids are in algebra, some are in geometry, some are in Algebra II. Like where are they falling? How does that affect the data? But overall, I think this speaks as, as, you know, Mr. Beam said at the start, right? That with this thesis statement, but we have work to do in math. And I think this, this shows that for us, especially at the secondary, dairy level. So then what does that look like staying with beginning of year to end of year for reading? So we see again that we're looking for that shift. And so now with this, unlike M-class with third graders, right? Where they, once they hit the, at least the green level, they don't take the M-class anymore. For MAP, third graders are taking the MAP all three times, right? So this is, so that everybody, so here we can see that, that what we would have seen in M-class data if we kept M-classing our third graders is happening. We see it in MAP. And then we do see that change from beginning of year to end of year for both fourth and fifth grade, that we see this increase in the green and the blue for reading in third through five. And if we flip to the next one, we'll see for secondary, you know, this looks like a super busy slide because I'm putting sixth through ninth. But it's like, this is, when you, when you look at the math data and then you go, oh, look at this reading though. Because look at the ninth graders, like, wow, look at those, I'm like, man, look at those ninth graders at the beginning of the year to the end of the year, from 12% in the red to 3%. Like I had a hard time getting the 3% to just fit inside the red. Right, I mean, so significant improvement in reading. And so if you think about, we have walk-to-read programs going in all of our middle schools. We have a, you know, Ryan Middle School has a Foundations of Reading course where they're really targeting it on top of their walk-to-read. You know, at, at, we also have the Connections to Language and Lit, like a kind of a tier-three reading intervention class at secondary for high schools as well. And so that work of that focus on literacy is also paying off at, at the secondary in our, in our MAP data. So then just, you know, continuing that. And then in the same vein, if we compare end-of-year to end-of-year, right? So there's that idea of like, you don't necessarily see the same level of growth, right? So one thing to keep in mind here, when you do end-of-year to end-of-year for MAP, is notice there's no third graders there. That's because they were second graders and they didn't MAP test. And so when you pull the MAP report for end-of-year to end-of-year to compare, you don't get any, well, you get a few sprinkling of third graders, but not enough statistically to look at. So that's why you only see fourth and fifth grade here. And again, this is back to math, so kind of going in the flow of where we need to improve and then ending on the highlight. You know, you don't, we don't see the same growth here. And also recognizing it is flipped and I just, there was, it's just the way the data pulls, but like the more recent year is on top now, whereas on the other MAP slides, the more recent year was on the bottom. So just being careful as you look at that, right? So, so we see a little bit of growth in fourth and, and fifth grade on the reading and our, on our green and blue. But again, here, we're not looking like this isn't a spot where we would be looking for, you know, this is like the 2% growth. So if you look at fourth grade, there is a 2% increase, right? And if you look at fifth grade, right, there's actually more than 2% there. So on the math front, it does not look as nice. Of course, when I move into the secondary, into six through nine, we actually see, right, a decrease in sixth grade. A slight increase in seventh grade, a decrease in eighth grade, and kind of stagnant, a slight decrease in ninth grade. So again, the, as we already said, the data is showing that need for a focus on, on math. As we go through. Oh, and then reading. So then if we look at that end-of-year, 23, 24 to 24, 25 in reading, right? The, we do see our, we're back to seeing 2% growth in fourth grade. We see even higher than that in fifth grade, like that fifth grade group is rocking it there when you look at that, that changes. And we do still see that again in our middle school. When we look at reading on the, on the MAP. Again, I want to call out our ninth graders, that's 6% to 2%, you know, looking at the decrease in the red and the orange. But again, we're seeing like our, look at our, the jump in eighth graders stands out to me when I look at, at that. And, and our sixth grader. So our reading, right, on that map, again, is kind of reflecting how we started the conversation as we go through.
Thank you. I, I just do want to kind of point out is the fact that, as was just said, we're working on literacy and reading, not just in elementary, but in secondary. And that's a new thing for us in this district. Until a few years ago, if a kid hit middle school and he was a struggling reader, he remained a struggling reader. We did not have a lot of options or ways to help him. Over the last couple of years, we've created a class, we have walked read, as Ms. Devon talked about, all the things that are, especially are, that, that our middle schools are doing. It's, it's working. It's, it's slow movement in the reading, but it is working. And we're saving some kids. And when I say we're saving some kids, when you think about the ability to read or people who have that ability to read versus folks who don't have the ability to read, that's a significant, a significant difference in their life as adults, as grown-ups. We're saving the kids when they learn how to read. So this is a, that's, it's, it's very important to remember what we're doing in secondary. We talk more about elementary, because that's where the flashy numbers are. But secondary is very important also. So we'll move to the last assessment, and this is the AK-Star. That's the big state test that comes out. This is the last year's, or actually, this is the district-wide, that is third grade through ninth grade, reading results for the last four years. And the few things that I would note here is, again, here is that dividing line with the green, blue versus the red, yellow. And you can see, if we start down here at the bottom, because that was 2022, you can see that this bar grows a little bit each time. So we have this very small growth, but it's the growth that we're looking for. Now, I'll remind the board, because if I don't, Mr. Dorn's going to say it later anyway, is that this, is that the AK-Star assessment is not an assessment that teachers can do a lot with. All it does is basically, here's where your kids are. The information that teachers can do something with, that's the M-class, that's the MAP. That's not this assessment. But it gives us a big picture view of things, which is important also. I would also point out is that this red needs support. From 2022, it's gone from 39 to 35 to 34 to 31. That's nice growth. That's nice. Math, the red is bigger. You can see that the red's bigger. The red's getting smaller as time goes on, but it's still bigger. So that's something, again, that we need to work on in math. And we're going to, that'll be my final slide that we talk about that whole process. The next four slides are super interesting to me. So what we did is, we looked at a certain, like one group of kids, well, two groups of kids. This is the class of 2031. This is our current seventh graders. And what we've done is, we've taken, we have taken their reading scores on AK-Star and followed that same group of kids for the last four years. So it starts when they're in third grade here. And then they're in fourth grade, and then they're in fifth grade, and then they're in, in sixth grade. So when we do the math, here's what I found out. When I put this slide together, at that, at that moment, we had 915 seventh graders. So I did some math. 915 seventh graders. 15% of them, so look at 43% here, at the bottom left, and 20, and 28%. So in those four years, we have 15% fewer kids in the category of need support. And if you do the math, 915 times 15% is 137 kids. That's 137 kids that are no longer, quote, need support, according to AK-Star. That's 137 kids that are better off because of the work that this district has done. Direction, 915 kids on the, on the proficient, just the green part. 2022, we go from 8% up to 24%. That's 16%. That's 146 kids. That's amazing. Then if you look at the class of 2032, same idea, 909 sixth graders, current sixth graders. And you can see what they've done in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade. 17% of them, when we, when we look at more proficient, I'm sorry, at proficient, in advance. So this line here, 17% of them are, 17, 17% more are in that, are in those two, two categories. There's 154 kids who are better readers because of the work that our teachers have done. Amazing, amazing work in reading. Now, I'll show you the same thing in math. Okay, a little bit like, oh, there's growth, but it's not what, what we want by any means. So it's good for 46 of, of our kids, it's good for 55. So it's good for forty-six of of our kids. It's good for fifty-five of of our kids. But we need to start thinking more about math. Same idea here, class of twenty thirty-two, the uh the numbers are a little bit better, but the idea is the same. We need to do better in math. Now, there are three more slides. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on them. I'm not going to spend hardly any time because it gets into the details. I will tell you, there are some things I needed to, I needed to clean up on the last two slides. I did it here, but the ones you guys have are the ones that still need to be cleaned up. I'll send you new versions of these last three slides so you can see them. But here's what I want to say. We know that math is the next thing that we need to focus on. That work has started in earnest this year. We tried to kind of start it last year and we just couldn't get the traction on it, but we are this year. What we are looking to do is to duplicate the work, duplicate the work that we did. With reading and apply that to math. So we want to start with solid materials, which we have, but then then the next step is. Strong professional development that are that's outside of of the materials. So yeah, here's how you use the materials, but also. What are some just really sound instructional strategies? We did that with reading. We had a professional come in. She worked with us for the last few years. She has seen every elementary teacher for the last three years have sat in in her session. She goes out to the school, she models. Our coaches go with her. It's been this whole thing about reading, and you can see that it's worked. Now, literally starting tomorrow in this room in about twelve hours, maybe ten hours now because it's kind of late. We're starting that same process in math. We have a we have a professional coming in. Both of these ladies are well-known around the state as the gurus of math and reading. They're going to be and and our math guru will be here tomorrow. Starting this same process of what are some strong, evidence-based instructional tools that our teachers can use? Just because this is what good math teachers do. We're starting that tomorrow. And I'm hoping to in a year from now, especially in two years from now, to be able to to come to you and say, oh, now look what we're doing in math. We'll still want to talk about reading because it's going to get better. But I also want to be able to say, here's where we are with math because of the work that we're starting here this year. Thank you for your attention. We're ready for some questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Beam and Ms. Devon for this excellent presentation. It's always encouraging to. See things happening with our students across our district and seeing an increase in scores and always something that I love to. Just be witnessing. It's pretty great. So thank you so much. With that, we will go to the board for questions. Ms. Carol Hubbard, I see you twitching over there.
I'm sorry, I'm the only one who's grinning from ear to ear. This is so exciting. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is the stuff. That we love to see. And this is, I mean, you know, some of it's hard. But this is what we need to see, and this is what we need to focus on. And thank you, thank you, thank you. I can't wait for tomorrow. I hope it's a huge success. I have no questions, really. I was going to go back over some things and kind of point some things out, but. Please keep doing what you're doing and and thank you to the teachers who are on the, you know, in in the trenches doing the work because. It's making a difference. It's it's obvious. And so this is, this is student outcomes, and this is what we live for. Thank you.
Mr. Dorn.
Thank you. And I want to say thank you for anticipating my question. And just affirming that teachers get no information for instruction from AK star. And we'll leave that there. Thank you. So on behalf of the board, thank you for. Taking a question away. Yes, very informative. I love the fact that you included cohorts. In that, I think that's very, very helpful. On slide nine, you've you brought forward a question that I had. The, you know, especially when we were talking about third grade. Would I be? Wrong to, well, maybe we won't put it right or wrong. I was looking at the third grade, beginning of year, end of year, and your explanation that once basically they pass. They 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 score proficient or better, they don't need to take the M plus again. Which makes sense. I remember teacher conversations about that. So the what the slide shows is that there were fifty-six percent proficient at the beginning of the year. When I look at the end of the year, assuming that fifty-six is out of that number. We could add those who are proficient at the end of the year, which would bring us to seventy-eight percent proficient in third grade. I know there might be a gap in there in terms of, I assume, those who scored proficient at winter might be out of that, but basically. That's, that's a growth factor.
Yes, I, yes, I so I I did the first part of that math equation. I didn't follow it up to the very end like you did. So when I talk about. The other five hundred and and twenty-one uh uh third graders who who have already passed, you took it farther than me and did the percentages. So I'm going to assume that your percentages are correct, and they would add so seventy-eight percent, which is really nice. So yes, I would like to also point out. That the same third graders who have really. Nice and happy data here, when they take the map, they still have good data, but it's a harder test. So in case you're looking and saying, well, the third graders were doing really well in M class, but but the same exact third graders aren't doing as well. With the map test, that's true, because the M class is very much about blending sounds and like it's very much about. Uh phonics uh uh phonics and and reading simple words, whereas M class, I'm sorry, whereas map is more about comprehension. So they're two different tests that test two different things.
Follow up.
Follow up, Mr. Dorn.
Okay, what's the next question? But you made it a follow up talking about map. And it was one of my things with third grade. They take an extra test. And then they're taking AK star for the first time, which also gets mixed with map. And my question is, and we may not really know, but my question is distractibility. You know, part of it is test fatigue, but part of it is distractibility, what they're hitting in. Math reading on the AK star, but then on the map. And they're having no idea whether there might be some. I lost the word that I wanted, but discrepancies because of distractibility in there. You know, but I I do like that when you gave us more of those progressions over here is. You know, it kind of evens out not worrying about this precise scores, but in terms of categories. So I don't know if you had anything to add to that.
I I no, I don't. I'll I'll just say. That less the third grade teachers, because they do give a lot of assessments and they have a lot on their plates. Because of all these assessments, and they they have more than anyone else. And it's 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 always rough for them, for sure. So thank you for pointing that out.
Dr. Minor.
I do think one highlight that we could add is that Chain and his team have worked with schools to change. The testing frequency. And so it used to be that we'd give a test and we'd want the student to sit the entire day to work on the test. And we've really focused on. Take an hour, take ninety minutes on the test, and then we're going to set it aside and we're going to come back tomorrow. Now, that does place an additional burden on schools because your testing window is longer. But I just had this conversation with Wellers principal last week. And she recognized that it is an additional burden, but she attributes some of the success on the test to. That fatigue that you're talking about and that doing it in smaller chunks and not just relying on one day and one snapshot has contributed to the success. That we're seeing. And so that's been a nice change that Chain and his team has worked with principals on implementing.
Thank you, Dr. Minor.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Ms. Dullian, and then we have Ms. Maple and then Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Yeah, I just want to say fantastic presentation. I wish that I I hope that the that the reporters are still listening because this is, this is really the story, I think, of the night. This data that you've just presented shows that the. The educators in our district against all odds. Have still been able to drive success. And I thank you for. Really leaning on a couple different points in your presentation, which is that they are saving. Kids. From they are saving kids. And so I I really want to thank you for recognizing that. Thank you for this data because. When we look at what are our educators doing, what are students? Actually doing in our district, it's right here. There is growth. And we should always, always be leading with that every time that we talk to any legislator, any reporter. Anybody who has power over our purse strings. Anybody who's thinking about maybe homeschooling their child in an out-of-district homeschool, we should talk about our our growth. Because it is substantial, it is notable, and it is celebratable. And we need to recognize the educators who are going above and beyond, and also to the administration, to your department. For putting together a guide map. And thank you so much for stating at the very beginning of this that too many things are dependent on people. The fact that this has been now baked into the district as to how we. Get people up on step on reading is a great achievement. Because that is exactly right. It shouldn't matter who's at the helm. We should be seeing these results. So thank you. Because from an administrative standpoint, that is very tough to do. So I appreciate you leading with that. My question is. Um, I I understand walk to read, you know, it's a, it's walking to read is you're able to level students, you're able to do small group interventions. Of course, our title schools that have more staffing are able to do it even a little bit more efficiently. That's why we see these great gains at some of our title schools like Denali. Like Hunter, like U Park. Because they have that additional staff. Not to say that our non-title schools aren't also seeing gains because we're seeing them. We're seeing those gains per walk to read. But again, it's it's taking a student where they're at, leveling them, and I see this as a parent with my own children, my own students. How absolutely substantially like successful that program has been. When we talk about math, though, my understanding it's it's a little bit different because math, and especially now as we get into grades four and five. And beyond, that's a graded activity. For teachers. Where reading is kind of a, I see it as like a huge umbrella. So when you're, I'm re, I'm, I don't know if you can explain it now, but I'm very curious how we can. Maybe replicate. What we've been doing in reading by leveling students and and doing that in math, because that small intervention has been so successful with reading.
Yeah, thank you for asking that that question. I want to go backward and and say thank you for the phrase against all odds earlier. Because I think that's a powerful phrase considering what's been going on in this district over the last three years. So thank you for that. As far as walk to read, that's a. Or I'm sorry, as far as a walk to math, essentially, that's an ongoing, an ongoing internal debate we're having. Ryan is already starting to do something along those lines on 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 the middle school level. Ms. LaPlante and I have been talking about it, and we've been talking to other folks, and we haven't come to a final conclusion on. Is walk to math something that we want to do? Some teachers totally say, oh, my gosh, we need to totally duplicate what what we did with walk to read. Other teach, um, other teachers I've heard say, you can't do both because there's just not enough time in the day. You could potentially alternate them and do two days of reading and two days of math. Maybe we'll end up there, but then you take away a couple of days of reading. I'll leave it in the fact that, and if Ms. LaPlante wants to chime in, she certainly can, is that that's an, that's an ongoing internal conversation. To see if that's something that we can do realistically or not.
Ms. Maple. Sorry. Oh, Kate, Ms. LaPlante, sorry. I didn't know how my glasses on. I took them off.
Looking to my boss to see if it was okay for me to jump in. I just want to add in that I think when we talk about replicating our success. One of the reasons that we have had this amount of success is because we worked with our educators to get where we are. We worked with the idea team that Chain has, that Mr. Beam has been. Instrumental in leading. And so that question about what will we do for math, that is being taken to our educators through the idea team. And they are the ones grappling with that. And we will come to the answer, not by me, not by. You know, one principal or by Mr. Beam. It'll be a collective decision with that team that will have utilized. Feedback from the schools, feedback from the principals. We'll come to that conclusion together as a team.
Ms. Maple.
I want to acknowledge my. Big elephant in the room. Of my like hippie. Thought processes that I'm really glad to see all this growth, and I also wish that we didn't have to have our kids doing so much standardized testing. And, you know, I know a conversation that we have in my house a lot is that. When our kids are struggling academically is a conversation about how we hope for them to grow up to be compassionate, contributing adults. And. I I guess I just say that it's not a question. I just say it to acknowledge that this growth is so immense, and I'm so proud of what we're seeing in our district. And I wish that we also had ways to measure the social emotional learning that we see happening. That we could present in this way that had value in our legislators' offices when we. Show up and talk about the growth we're seeing in our community and the the humans we're producing out of our schools that are contributing to this magnificent community we live in. So. Thanks for sharing all of it. I love to see this growth and. I hope one day we can see. Some, some, I don't know, evidence of all of the other. Harder to measure things that we're doing in our schools that all of our teachers are doing every day.
Thank you. I don't know if you were watching me when you're talking. But this is, this is a general thing. When I do this, and I and I look like I'm not listening, what that really means is. Oh, I'm starting to think about what you're just, what you're just talking about. So I look back at Ms. LaPlante, and I think she was trying to look back at. At at Bree, because when you said, can we measure growth of social emotional, that's kind of interesting. I don't know, but that's kind of interesting. Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you. I just would like to go back to page seventeen, please. So what I, what I gleaned from this page was actually really positive. So if you take the, if you take line number two, and you look at the sixth graders end of year for twenty-three, twenty-four, and right underneath it is the seventh graders end of year twenty-four, twenty-five. Is significant change, except at the top. The top seems to be flat. It's like the kids that are that that are getting it, they're holding their own, but they're not growing. And then we're not, but you already know that. But I just was looking at that, and I just wanted to point that out. I I didn't really feel like it got pointed out, but like you look at the seventh. End of year twenty-three and eighth end of year twenty-four, again. It, you see the growth. There's good growth there, and the same for eighth to ninth. That's really significant. So. I know that, you know, math, they, we're we're struggling with math, but I think that there's an element of reading. That crosses over into math. So the better they do in reading, I think it's just going to be a natural. Thing for them to do better in math. They can actually read the word problem and and actually comprehend and understand what they're looking at. So I I don't know if you, if you pointed that out, I I missed it if you did, because I was over here writing other things down. But I just wanted to point that out because I think that's outstanding. So we, you know, to our math teachers. It's happening. It's just not on the same scale as the reading. But I am with Ms. Dullian. I really would love to see like a walk to math. But I think that if, you know, as as we start in elementary school, of course, just like with reading, as the kids are getting proficient at a younger age. They stay in those, they stay in the. they stay in those, they stay in the green band, they stay in the positive side. And it just grows from there because then they're not trying to decode. They're not trying to, oh, we don't even understand what six and six is. You know, they, they've got number cents down, just like they have phonics down. So somehow, if we can get those things rolling in K-three, it's, you know, time and it'll roll up. But I love what, uh, Ms. Curry is doing at the middle school level. And I don't know who's doing it at the high school level, but, uh, kudos to them. Because that's, I feel like those kids sort of get left behind because now we're reading to learn and we're doing, you know, we're computing to understand, but we're not learning to compute and learning to read anymore as we get older. So thank you for those people who are, um, taking up that mantle. Because it's super important because like, uh, was said, they're saving kids and this is great stuff.
I, um, you know, I'm not going to be here in the spring or next fall. But I'm going to be watching because this is powerful. And to see what has happened in a few short years of being on this board, I can't wait to see what this looks like next year and the year after. We're doing some great things here. And I just appreciate all the work that has gone into it. From you guys to our teachers who are teaching it, to the board who puts in policies and does things to make it happen. Um, a walk to math would be really cool. So think about that. I know, I'm going to put more on your plate as I walk out this door. Mr. Doran.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to stay on slide seventeen for a minute because I think, um, Ms. Carol Hubbard brought up something that's really important. Um, what's really significant when we looked at the sixth grade there, uh, at twenty-six percent. And I know it's not the cohort, uh, twenty-six percent proficient or above. Um, it's forty-five percent proficient or above at ninth grade. Significantly, the, and in your other slides, um, the, uh, the most struggling group is consistently getting smaller. The support groups consistently getting smaller. And you have to keep progressing forward. So I think yes, this touts a really, really important, um, uh, point that we should, we should not just talk about the top ones. We should really shout out the results as kids have struggled. Uh, we know there's been a, uh, there was slippage after, uh, the pandemic. And some are early learning times for kids. Uh, but those struggling groups are consistently getting less. And over time, uh, they're getting higher. It, it kind of strikes me, I don't want to see eleventh and twelfth graders have to be tested again. But it, it just raises that thing that, you know, that trajectory as they learn it and practice it, um, becomes significant. And that's a lot of it when you're doing it. Um, I have two things. One is, uh, I had a notation here about Walk to Math. And I want to use that very loosely, uh, because I'm not advocating for it. But I want it because as Mr. Plante said, schools have their plates full. And, um, the, the reading literacy skills, and I'm thrilled to see it come into the secondary on a very, um, uh, focused effort to help kids. Um, because it's another way of learning to read than they had when they were in kindergarten to third. Um, but I have been struck, and I was going to ask kind of the administration to comment if they wanted, but if you don't, um, at this point, is that I have been struck by the conversations as I have visited schools. The cognizance of principals and teachers to look at the math pieces, learn what they have from the Walk to Read, using the staff that they've got. Not necessarily some are working around with the Walk, Walk to Math type of thing. Some of them are doing it just within grade level and doing some differentiation within the grade level. Uh, because yes, there's only so much time in the day. Um, and, uh, and schedules can prohibit. I, I do like the empowerment of schools, uh, but, uh, to solve that issue. And it might be different at each school, but I like the focus, uh, the continuing growth as you've mentioned here. Uh, we, we have a clean up path for reading. Um, uh, we need to get there with math. But that the schools are really actively doing that. Um, and, uh, and, and having that flexibility to say, how do we address it within our school? Um, so, uh, but as I looked at these and as you've talked, um, a question that came to my mind or a, a, a curiosity. And this might be more for Dr. Ellis in his free time. Uh, but we focus on the results in math and reading as discrete measures. But I, my curiosity question is, how does this show up in other disciplines? Other areas? Because a lot of times, that's the application. I'm mindful of that with this morning's CTE, uh, presentation. They are applying math, they are applying reading. And, um, you know, they do that in health careers. They do that in social studies. They do that, you know, in science. And as these go up, um, it might be anecdotal from teachers, uh, elementary and particularly secondary. Because that's where, you know, we're not looking at a student at just one moment of time. We're looking at it as child develops. But just a question to pose out there, uh, that might be worth playing with and getting some, uh, feedback on, uh, other teachers seeing the difference and, uh, in their disciplines. Um, because I know when we did first, um, a version of Walk to Read, the intermediate elementaries were saying, we're seeing a difference in the kids coming in to fourth, fifth, and sixth grade at that time. And I'm, I'm just thinking, this is not in isolation. But how we do it and how you get there, I don't know. But I just posed that curiosity question.
Mr. Doran, is that an intellectual, um, question that you just put out there? Or do you want a, 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 an answer?
No, I, I don't think there's an answer now.
Oh, okay.
Okay. But unless you have one, if you have one, that's, that's great.
I, I will tell you, over time, this is what we would see, ideally. If we continue with a path that we are doing, when kids get high school, they'll be better prepared to do all the things that we need them to, uh, to do. More kids will pass Algebra I. Which means more kids will graduate. Because that's one of the biggest blocking paths that we have right now. It's Algebra I, since we have to pass that class to graduate. So that'll happen. More kids will take AP classes. More kids will pass AP tests. More kids will be better prepared when they graduate. In the long run, that's what we'll end up seeing. Because we'll be better readers, we'll be, we'll be better at math, we'll be, we'll be better to do science, physics, chemistry, history, government. All of those classes we'll be better at because our basic skills were better when we were seven and eight and nine. Now that we're sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. That's what it would look like.
Thank you for, for tossing that out. And I am just going to make the connection that, uh, we're seeing it in our, perhaps is one of the contributors to our graduation rate. Um, I'm mindful of learning today that upwards of a hundred and fifty students have gotten certifications in welding, uh, between Hutch and North Wall High. Those types of numbers that show, yes, whether they were ramifications. So thank you for adding to that.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Is there anything further from board members at this time? Seeing nothing, thank you, Mr. Beam. And thank you, Ms. Devon, for your presentation tonight. We appreciate you hanging in there and staying late. That brings us to the end of our agenda for the evening. And we'll leave us with a board comment. Um, I'd just like to ask board members if we could be mindful and keep them short, um, as it is after ten. We will start down here with Mr. Burgess.
Nothing from me tonight except a fond farewell.
Thank you, Mr. Burgess. Ms. Maple.
Um, I just want to say briefly that, um, during one of our recesses, someone showed me a social media post, um, from the Pearl Creek Charter School, um, account posted just minutes before our meeting started, uh, that said that they didn't expect us to vote in favor of their charter and that they're confident it will be well received when they appeal to the state to override our decision. And I want to be really clear about what that means. The board and admin have spent endless hours evaluating this application. And the board has relied on a comprehensive review of both the proposed school and the overall impact on the district in determining how we each voted. If this group successfully appeals to the state, this will add a $2.7 million deficit after we've already done the hard work of producing a balanced budget. And this means negative impacts on all of our neighborhood schools. There is no way to spin this to make it financially viable. And I urge folks to stay engaged as it's been made very clear that the Pearl Creek Charter applicants do not intend to accept the response that we've provided this evening. Um, that's all I have. And, uh, I will echo Mr. Burgess that I'm going to miss sitting next to you and smiling at you all meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Maple. Ms. Carol Hubbard.
Thank you for sharing, Ms. Maple. I think it's a really important thing you just shared. Um, so I want to echo that and encourage the community to, to stay involved and to pay attention. Because, um, yeah, that's going to seriously negatively impact our school district, um, if that happens. So, um, Mrs. Burnett, thank you. Um, I think I can just, um, say that thank you for the late night phone calls. Maybe I can't. I love you. Thank you so much. I appreciate you and I appreciate everything you helped me learn so far. And, um, okay, uh, talk to you later. Okay. Uh, it's been fun getting, but Brandon is my nephew. And I hadn't seen Brandon in twenty years, at least. I think about twenty years. And so I got to meet my lovely niece, um, for the first time. And we, I didn't even realize that she was married to Brandon. I had no idea. So, uh, to get reacquainted with my family, uh, was a great gift. So I'm super grateful for that. So, um, I, I just wanted to, um, say that I, I, uh, got to attend one of the SPED, um, meetings. That was the, uh, out at, um, Ticosack Brown. And, um, what a lovely school they have out there. And it's just packed and really buzzing. And it's so great. Um, kids are, are happy and everybody, I, it was just really fun. I got to go on a great tour with the principal and so, um, but one of the things I noticed about this special education, um, the special meeting was that, um, the teachers were just kind of passing the hallway, the, the assistants. Um, I don't know exactly what we call them, but just, they, they would pass and they're, oh, you're here today. And they'd pop in and I just have a quick question for you. And whatever it was. And it just was so well received. And, uh, it didn't seem like there was anything major that was happening. It was just little things. And so it was nice to be able to watch that happen. And we just ironed out a few things. Um, and it was very well received and I thought it was a very successful, uh, event. And so I hope it's happening that way at the other schools as well. Um, let's see, I wanted to also just, uh, put a shout out to the West Valley Choir one more time and thank them for their presentation tonight. Um, I love music. It is my bag. It is my love language. And I, 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 yeah, anyway, thank you, West Valley Choir. You were lovely and, um, all of your voices are wonderful. Um, also, I wanted to just put a, a, a thank you out there to Mr. Daly today, uh, with the welding advisory. What a great presentation he has. Um, if any of you get an opportunity to go to that, um, to check out the welding program at Hutch, uh, what a fantastic, uh, program he has. And I know he's not, he's not an island. He's not doing it alone. He has great people working with him. But, um, the students there were, their presentation was wonderful. And so that was really fun to be involved in. Um, the consolidation has brought stability to the district. Someone said that and I just wanted to say that again. The consolidation has brought stability to the district. And for the first time in eight years, maybe we can start to invest in our schools. So I'm hopeful, I just want to leave that on a hopeful note. And, uh, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Carol Hubbard. Mrs. Doolian.
Uh, I want to thank, uh, fellow board member, Ms. Maple, for bringing that forward. Uh, it is not a surprise because the, um, applicants, the Pearl Creek APC has stated many times publicly, um, that they would appeal a decision should it, um, have been denied. And so I want to read section, uh, Alaska Statute fourteen point zero, three point two five, section D, for the public to understand what this process looks like. And this is in statute. So if a local school board denies an application for a charter school, the applicant may appeal the denial to the commissioner. So that is within statute. The appeal to the commissioner shall be filed not later than sixty days after the local school board issues its written decision of the not denial, which, um, for the record, that should be on the fourth of November is when we will be reviewing that written decision. That was not made tonight. That's on the fourth of November. So sixty days after that is when they have, um, to appeal that. The commissioner shall review the local school board's decision, which is that written decision, to determine whether the findings of fact are supported by substantial evidence and whether the decision is contrary to law. Period. A decision of the commissioner upholding the denial by the local school board may be appealed within thirty days to the State Board of Education and Early Development. There's two processes here. And it's important that the public understand that. And again, that's section Alaska Statute fourteen point zero, three point two five zero, section D. Teachers are givers. Thank you, Dr. Minard, for saying that. They are givers. Educators go beyond every single day, above and beyond. None of this growth would be possible if it weren't for the educators who show up every single day. So I want to thank our educators for doing what you do. And it's the reason I think that we are all here at almost ten thirty at night, doing what we do. So I want to talk about an investment. Because should, um, we, should local control be, um, superseded by a state board of education? Um, should the appeal go through and the investment is kind of four star hand of up to $2.7 million for a school? We right now are in the first position in many years, since 2017, to be able to potentially invest, maybe, we're not there yet, but maybe invest in our schools. Last, uh, on the fourteenth of October, we learned about a potential opportunity. At least the district is exploring an opportunity to reinstate some of our music educators within our elementary schools. And this is from a community member who emailed us. Do you want smarter kids? Teach them music. Music education improves students' critical thinking skills, reading and math scores, ability to work cooperatively, be confident, and succeed beyond the classroom. That's data. And I am the geek on this board, as stated by Ms. Burnett. And I own that. Um, we have made sustainable budget decisions that were incredibly hard so that we could get to a place to potentially stabilize the fiscal realities. so that we could get to a place to potentially stabilize the fiscal realities of our district to then invest in what we have. And I know that that's my North Star. How can we invest in the whole, in the most students, in the most effective way that's going to drive success for those students? Whatever that means, social, emotional. It means test scores, being confident, graduating, whatever that success looks like. But how can we help students succeed? That is my North Star. We effectively put more dollars into more students so that more students can succeed. I have never been for carving off the hole to support those with the privilege to opt into something different. We have a lot of options right now. What we need to do right now, our neighborhood schools have been taking the cuts again and again and again. We need to invest. I believe we need to invest. This is our chance to invest in neighborhood schools. And, um, I hope that we can get there. I want to say thank you to the administration for investing in Lad Elementary. After we saw the uptick in military connected students PCSing there. I visited a fourth grade class. I read to that class. It was so super exciting and I loved it. But free reading time to students is so important. So, um, I'm just going to leave it at that, that as we enter a long weekend next week with our, with our students and many of you parents and, and guardians will have students at home. Pick up a book, read a book, not on a tablet. Go to the library, check out a book, cozy up, read a book. It is part of what we can do as parents to support everything that our educators are doing against all odds, day in and day out. So, thank you. And to Ms. Burnett, I'm going to miss you.
Thank you, Ms. Dullian. Mr. Dorn?
Thank you. I've got, um, three things. One, uh, just to bring the attention of the board. And I thank Ms. Richardson for, uh, passing on some information. I've talked several times throughout this year, been there cohort seven through this year. It continues until December 31. But I just wanted to share the information. They are recruiting for cohort eight. Encourage, uh, members to think about it. And, uh, also our newly elected, um, uh, members. That it's certainly open to them, but their, uh, application deadline is, uh, the 31st. So it's coming up of October. But, uh, I found it to be a very, very valuable, uh, experience and, uh, would encourage you to at least look at it, whether it's this, this coming year or for the following year. Uh, but to, uh, to join in with them. Putting out there for the board to consider, um, that at some point we might, um, have a work session specifically on the strategic plan. We've referenced it a lot of times. I appreciate the efforts that the administration is doing to, um, make it, uh, visible and actionable. As I've gone into schools and into classrooms and I see the plan up there, uh, you know, through, so it's really, uh, throughout our district. But for us as a board, um, to do two things, two aspects of it. One is to kind of, uh, get an update from the administration on, uh, the things that you have going and principals are working on. And I know you've, uh, reached out to them and people, different groups, uh, talking about it. But as importantly, uh, for us as a board, uh, we adopted it. But having a conversation, what does it mean to us? Becomes an important thing. So we're not, uh, playing catch up when things come from the administration or ideas. But that we also are doing some brainstorming and saying really what, what's, what's belonging? What's creativity, community? What, what do those things mean to us and the pillars? This is over a course of five years that we're looking ahead, what we'd like to see at the end of that five years. But, uh, having that real conversation of its, um, uh, uh, meaning for us. And, and as a, as a new board, um, uh, bring everyone, uh, up to date with that. And then the last thing I have is, um, I've talked often, as several of us have done, uh, as we visit schools and we see what's going on. But what really struck me in the last week is, um, beyond talking about what's happening in individual schools or individual classrooms. I was driving home and, uh, crossed my mind, wow. The quality of consistency of instruction in our schools is really incredible. Each classroom has its own nuances. Each school is unique as a community and how they're addressing their students and stuff. But it's consistent, the quality that's there. Of when I ask students, what are you working on? And it doesn't matter whether it's in a kindergarten class or in a, um, senior, uh, social studies class. It's, it's been consistent. That they can tell me what they're doing, what they're working on. And, and I'm going to say it's even at the college level because I was up there at North Star and talking to students about their class, uh, class. But the consistency, watching teachers, listening to snippets of their conversations, their instruction. It is really, um, impressive. And so I wanted to acknowledge that consistency, uh, that goes beyond the individual, uh, highlights that are there. But, uh, I think it's great kudos, um, to our educators and, and just wanted to share that observation as I've, I've enjoyed reveling in it for the, the last several weeks.
Thank you, Mr. Dorn. Um, that's going to bring me up to me. I normally don't have comments, but I just wanted to wrap up with two more minutes. So I asked for two more minutes on my last board meeting. I just really want to say thank you to everybody, to our community, to our administration. Mrs. LaPlante, Mrs. Gillum, I'll see you at hockey. I, I, I'll see you probably tomorrow. Mr. and Mrs. Beam. Brianna, everybody. Ms. Richardson, sorry, Ms. Gray. Thank you to every principal who welcomed me into their schools over the last three years. I had some of the coolest experiences and tours and got to meet some really great staff. Thank you to the teachers who were willing to pull me into the hallway for two minutes because you just wanted to tell me something good or you wanted to share something that you really just wanted to get out. These last three years have been amazing. Thank you, board members, for accepting me and trusting me and, and getting to know me and understanding that even though four hours ago, somebody may have called me a zealot, that you guys know that that's not who I am. That everything that I have done has been for our students. And you know what? I'm proud to have sat here and I am proud of the work that we did together. The work that I was involved with, with all of you, past and present board members. Ms. Sanderson, if you're listening, thank you for teaching me to stay in my lane. I mean, there's, there's, I can't tell you how many times she said that, stay in your lane, stay in your lane. You know, there, there's been so many lessons, so many laughs, so many sad times, so many hard times. Thank you to my husband who has taken the kids to hockey, taken my kids, our kids everywhere they've needed to go, handled meetings, handled appointments. Left work early because I had a meeting with Dr. Minor or because I had to go tend to something. I got a last minute phone call and it was something that really needed handled. And he jumped in and handled everything. My kids, they've missed the crap out of me. My daughter has cried so many times because of hockey games that I have missed. But she's given me that grace. I've watched her grow up over three years on a video camera. And I don't regret any of it. I've loved these last three years. Who knows? Maybe I'll be back. But what I can promise is that I'm not going anywhere. I'll be here. I'll be advocating for our district, for funding, for our students and for the things that we need because this, this is important. What you six are going to continue on and do, you guys are going to do fantastic things with the new board members. To Naomi and Audra, good luck. You've got a huge learning curve ahead of you, but I know that you guys are going to be successful. You both were phenomenal on the campaign trail. And so I wish you luck. If you need anything, I'm here. Got three years of knowledge up in this noggin and I'm here for you. I'm here for each of you board members. And I wouldn't be who I am if I didn't end this with a song lyric. And so I just want to thank each and every bull who ever bucked me off. Because it has been worth it and that's by Kip Moore. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
For the last time, we are adjourned.